Can I get a motion to open the meeting?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we'll start with the budget hearing.
Thank you very much. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, members of the board. Superintendent Graves. Tonight is our budget hearing presentation. So here we are. We've taken our budget from the origins to where we are tonight. So please allow me to recap much of what you've seen already and what we've discussed. And so here we go. Sign the method button. Turn on. That one's on. Okay. Thank you. Thanks Scott. So this is a slide that we've seen before. Our proposed budget for 2018-19 is $41,888.96. It is a budget-to-budget increase of 4.95 percent. Our property tax levy limit was 4.02 percent. The board approved a tax levy increase of 3.51 percent. So the projected tax levy is $37,561.40. It could have been $37,748.646. So we are under the tax levy limit by $187,506. And as noted below, for the seventh year in a row, that the tax cap has been in effect. The proposed budget tax levy are below the tax cap and all of our programs have been maintained here in Sag Harbor. Tough slide to read from the screen. Everyone's got a copy of it. This chart I presented twice now. This chart shows as of June 30th of 2017, our full 4 percent fund balance and all of the reserves that we have in all categories. In our 2018-19 proposed budget, with the pre-K through 12 highlights and the district-wide highlights, and this slide has been specifically developed by Superintendent Graves, all current programs will be maintained. There will be professional development for all teachers and staff to ensure excellent instructional opportunities and practices, particularly to support our fragile learners, to support further development of learning opportunities in STEAM, of which I believe there's a separate presentation will be made tonight, eliminate the middle school assistant principal position and create a middle school principal position. And from the district's perspective, we're upgrading our outdated network operation system and we are significantly exploring what limitations we may have to strengthen district security and safety.
Can I just confirm a point of clarity? Well, this says the proposed budget, the addition of a middle school principal, those additional costs is not in the proposed budget, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And it hasn't been publicly vetted or discussed? It's just up here as a placeholder for a future discussion?
That's correct.
All righty, thanks.
Okay. This is the budget newsletter that just went out and was mailed to everyone in the district. Copies of this were just delivered today to the John Germain Library. And we also have copies in both schools, as was the budget statement delivered. And we have a copy of the budget statement in both schools. And our budget newsletter is six pages long. And it just walks the reader through all the highlights of the district. We basically recap all the slide shows into the six-page presentation. And specifically what's in here, we show our proposed expenditures for 1819. I broke the expenditures down to the three parts that were required to do by law. The administrative portion, the program portion, and then the capital portion. And this slide also shows you the revenues, how we anticipate paying for next year's budget, and the breakdown. Our tax levy that at the 3.51 percent is here. And what we're going to appropriate for reserves, the $500,000 here. What's coming from fund balance, $581,000 here. These other categories are monies that we're anticipating coming in based on historical perspective. This is a highlight of all the state aid that we're anticipating for next year. And those are the percentage changes, which came to the 4.95 percent. And I also just wanted to mention in the newsletter that we put out is the budget notice. And I also had a chart showing, it's like a pie chart of our revenues. So now, this particular slide demonstrates the impact of our 3.51 percent tax levy increase. This slide is another slide that we've presented in the past. And it just takes a historical perspective from 2013-14 in the town of East Hampton, and then 2014 in the town of Southampton, walks you all the way through to where we are now, 2018-19 in yellow for both respective towns. And we took, based on the market value of a $1 million home in both respective townships, what the tax rate and the tax levy increase would be. And we calculated that for an average $1 million home in East Hampton, the increase is $187.95 per year, $15.66 per month. And in Southampton, $147.40, $12.28 per month. We also have a slide up here based on the property tax rebates. And that's all based on an individual's income. And based on that person's income, the amount of discount that they would receive. And this is for the 2018-19 for East Hampton and Southampton. And these are some averages, what we're looking at. This is the document that I just demonstrated that's in the newsletter. We're required by law to publish this. It's the school district budget notice. It takes you through our current budget, our budget that you actually just adopted on the 23rd. And then we're required by law to list a contingency budget. And then we denote the date and time of the vote, any other separate propositions that would go on that would cost us money, of which there are none. So then the budget statement. That's the big binder that I brought to the library today and that each school has a copy of it in the front office. The budget statement is a very, very detailed binder. And it basically tells the entire story of Sag Harbor. And most of the information comes from the SED website under Sag Harbor Union Free School District. But in it, I put our budget in there. And if you look at it, and we have a copy here in the front office, I kind of go above and beyond what the law says we have to do. We have our full budget in there in detail with the names of staff redacted. I've also got that budget broken down into the three component parts. I also have our contingency budget in there. I have our property tax report card, as well as the school academic report cards in there for the past year, our fiscal accountability. There's an administrative compensation disclosure notice that's in there. And then what the exception reports are from the two towns. And I just received those about a week ago, and those are in there as well. All that information's in the budget statement. I do have to put this advisory. What happens if our budget fails? The board has several options at its disposal. One, you can resubmit the same budget again. Two, you can submit a newly revised budget. Three, you can immediately go to a contingency budget. If there is a second vote, and at the second vote the budget fails, we immediately go to a contingency budget, which means it's the same tax levy as we're experiencing this year. And then we have to adjust down the difference. And one of the major components that comes out of our budget and a contingency budget, all capital equipment with the inception of special education equipment gets removed from the budget. And that's a very significant amount of money. And in our case, it's $774,415. There are other things that usually go along with a contingency budget, which include limiting the usage of our facilities by the public. So contingency is not a pleasant thing for a school district to endure. And this is the contingency revenue budget that I've devised, and that's in your packet. This is the contingency expenditure. But I have great confidence, this is what I've researched with the Sag Harbor community, that this community is very supportive of school and the wonderful programs that we have here. So I'm required by law to present this portion to you, but I have every confidence that the voters will come out and support the budget.
Before we move past this slide, I think it came up at a previous meeting, but can we just reconfirm that this is saying that we estimate there's no initial annual cost? If there is an increase in the cost due to this, what happens? Just so that voters understand.
And I think we got a memo from our attorney regarding that.
We did, but the public may be unaware.
No, I know. I'm just, so that everybody knows where the information came from. And maybe my trustees can help me remember the details, but I recall that gist of the memo was that there's no, our hands aren't tied in any way.
Right. So if people, if the community supports this and there actually is an additional cost, legally the district would have a right to have it? And there's no cap on what that cost could be?
Right.
Would that require a vote of the board to approve that expenditure? Or could the district do it without the board approving that additional expenditure?
From the, the attorney made no mention of board approval, that it would just, we would just use our reserve funds that we have and the fairly ample special transportation. But from what our head of bus has said, and forgive me for being repetitive, is that this is the one-mile range. So this is from a half-mile to a mile that we'd be picking children up at bus stops. So it's not door-to-door transport. So if you've ever been at each of the schools, the bus loops are fairly short. And so it would be the first bus that drops children off who could then go leave and pick up more children should it become substantial. So we are not seeing that this is going to be cost prohibitive because we would be simply using the buses we already have to do this work.
Right. Thank you.
So I just put a slide in there for the budget vote and election. That's on Tuesday, May 15th, 2018, in the Pearson High School Gymnasium, from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. And this chart, I showed it the last time. I just wanted to show it one more time, the historical budget vote results. And historically, if you take a look at this number right here, historically 64 percent of the voters over the span from 2004 to where we are now have voted in favor of the school district's budget. And as I mentioned the last time, I want to mention again, I want to thank everyone in the community. I want to thank my colleagues, Superintendent Graves, the board. It's been a real pleasure working with you these past few months. And in our budget development, it was a lot of work. You've got very thick binders now with lots of information. And for the public's edification, I know I'm being taped, I wanted to say that every one of these PowerPoint slides, as well as our detailed budget, are online. And you'll find them very easily accessible. And including tonight's presentation, which will go up tomorrow, everything's there. And thank you very much.
Does anybody have any questions?
I have a couple of questions. Could we go back, I have questions on just a couple of pages, to page three in your presentation, please?
Sure.
The fund balance and reserves.
Sure. Let me bring it back. Sorry, pull the slide up. Okay.
Okay, so I just want to be clear, budgets are not my thing. So this needs, with all these reserve funds, our total is nearly $13 million that we have in reserves as of June 30th of last year.
That's correct.
Correct. And then the two expenditures here, I just had a question about. So in the, where it says, the first line, reserve for incumbences, and then there was $708,000, and we spent $480,000. Do you have a sense of, was that our building stuff? Like just, no, I'm just curious what that was.
No, I'm really glad you, that's a great question. So what happens when a school district closes, officially closes its books on June 30th, we still have expenditures coming in. We had services rented like right up until June 29th, milk deliveries, utilities, insurance, all these different things. So though we've closed books June 30th, we're getting those bills after the fact. So we'll start getting those bills in July, sometimes even in August. So that money is allocated to pay those bills. So they're last year's expenses that we're paying this year. So I have to allocate that money for that.
Okay. All right, so I was just curious what it was. So it's just all kinds of stuff?
Yeah.
Okay. And then in the retirement contribution reserves, the $444,000, can you just give us a sense? And you might have to go and look and come back to us on that. But is that sort of a typical cost for us each year, that amount? Or how is that varied?
So what happened, that was, so let me, the way I'm going to answer that question is by showing you right here. Okay, you see where proposed budget reserves for 2018-19? Now we're going to drop all the way down. It says appropriation from ERS Reserve, and I've got $500,000 appropriated. You'll see the current year we're in, we have $500,000 appropriated here. That's a really good estimate because we appropriated $500,000. But in 1617, which is the year prior, and I don't have that chart here, but it was the, I know it was the same amount of 500,000, we utilized 444, 584. So what I'm saying is that that amount of money that we're allocating towards the budget is a pretty accurate number.
But what I'm asking is, is that, that 444, so now for the next year, you're estimating 500,000, so you're assuming the number will be within it. So what was the year prior? So I'm just trying to get a sense, is that number typically about the same? Or has it been increasing?
So we're in this year now, so I don't have a final number yet here. But I know in 1617, it was the 444, 584. So that's why for 1819, I feel very confident by putting that same amount in, along with the other amounts we have, it balances our budget. I feel comfortable with that number.
No, I understand moving forward. I was, I was asking about going backwards.
Well, how far back do you want to go?
I just wanted to know if that was a typical number?
That's the number that I-
Or if it's been substantially increasing?
That's, no, that's been a static number that I've seen for the past few years.
Oh, okay, okay, good. That's what I was curious about.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. And then in page eight of your presentation, I just had a quick question here, too. So for the town of Southampton, you know, you guys do the tax levy increase, and then there's a projected number that that affects the, some of these taxes. And in Southampton, the last number of years, because of, I guess, their growing tax rolls, taxes actually went down even though the school's levy went up. Also, the STAR program was different. So there was a time several years ago where just about everybody got checks back. Most people aren't getting their refunds back. And so people aren't, that was covering, so when we said, hey, it's going up, but because the STAR, but now there's no rebates for most people. But that's what I was asking. So that was the last one, two, three, four years. But this year, in the yellow, you have it at 308. So what I'm curious is, so is that still considered the projected number? Or is that now the actual?
That's, that is an estimated number based on a typical million-dollar home. So it's going to change based on the value of the home.
Okay, so, no, but I'm not talking about based on the value of the home. I'm talking about what might happen based on Southampton.
Oh, okay, so-
And still saying, in other words, we're increasing the tax levy, but because of whatever happened in Southampton, the percent of the tax rate for people actually went down?
That's correct.
Even though the tax levy went up?
Correct.
Okay, so what I'm trying to understand is, for this last line, for this year, that 308, which is a stark difference from the last four years in Southampton, is that a projected number on your part that you have to estimate based on the levy? And then we don't know yet what will actually happen in Southampton Town?
That's right. That's projected.
Okay. All right, thank you. That's my question.
And the median price of a house in our district is about 1.45 million that's selling now. So it's about a $225, $240 increase depending on the house. So how is it?
It's a unique scenario because what you're, what you're really talking about, it's an inverse relationship of what's going on between the tax rate and the tax levy.
Right. Right. Because if they're getting more revenues overall, even though the levy goes up, their rate goes down.
Right.
So I was just curious what that was going to happen this year. So that, we don't know, and that's projected. Okay, thank you.
Were there any questions?
Anything else?
Do we want, can I get a suggestion? Since we have lots of time, we have three people in the public. We want to hear if they have questions.
Well, we can move to public input one. It sounds like you're making a motion.
I'm making a motion not to start the 7:30 meeting right now, but to add something to the agenda of the 6:30 to allow anyone in the public. I have no idea if anyone wants to come up. Usually it's quiet. But I can tell, you're looking and saying, I have a thousand questions. I don't know. But to give the public an opportunity to ask questions.
Okay, the motion on the floor is to open up a little Q and A time for the public. Can I get a second for the motion?
Sure, one second.
Second? Okay, discussion? Any discussion?
I think it's a good idea if they have questions, allow them. They're taxpayers.
Anybody else? All right, the, can I get a vote on whether we should open it up to the public for a few minutes? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Okay, motion carries. So I'd like to propose that we, let's see, it's 7:02, maybe 10 minutes. Can I get a second for 10 minutes?
One second.
No, any discussion?
We have 28 minutes to the next meeting. I have no idea if we have one question or collectively they have 50. But for once, we actually have time, and it's not late. So I would suggest, you know, unless, you know, to have it not interfere with the next meeting, but if it takes 12 minutes to hear the three of them with their questions, we should give it to them. So I'm putting something on the table of 20, it ends by 25 after. So we can get a bye or break for the next meeting.
Okay, so the motion on the floor is for 10 minutes. Any other discussion on the motion on the floor? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. All those opposed? Motion carries. Is there anybody in the public that would like to ask the business official any questions?
I have more than will take. I'll take them yours.
I'm telling you first, it makes you doubt about it. It's my first one, so yeah, I got that too. So you're not going to ask anymore? Okay, I did. I have just two quick ones.
So I'm going to ask that you come up, state your name, know that you're being recorded.
I have two questions. Explore limitations to strengthen district security and safety. We know that that's been like an issue of mine. Is there like an update on that? So in the budget, how much money did we increase it? From what to what? Is it just the officer, or is there for other steps? Because we really haven't had any protocol. That's question number one. And then number two is, we got a 61 percent increase in non-resident tuitions. So my question for that is, is the data on how you got to that question?
Sure.
Sit. Thanks.
Keith, you want to uptake vote?
Sure. Go ahead, and I'll just fill in.
Okay, sounds great. Well, thank you for those two questions. And so let me answer the first one. I will defer to the superintendent on some of the specifics, but next year's budget, we have specifically allocated, there's $300,000 in next year's budget for safety and security measures. Now, that's a combination of technology and staffing. I want to be cautious not to say too much and tip my hand on the specifics, so I think I'm going to defer to the superintendent. But that's how much money, and it's for those two purposes.
And we are, it's complicated because we're still meeting with, we've had a series of meetings with all the East Hampton police, that is, that's the chief of police for the town of East Hampton, the village of East Hampton, the Sag Harbor Chief of Police, their detectives, the 911 dispatch officer, who is a Pearson graduate. They have been having rather intense meetings, so things like, one of the things they know that's missing is a secure channel for us to be able to be talking to the police, because one of the things that happens in not just an active shooter event, but in a wind or water event, is the phone lines go down. So that we have a way to talk directly to the police, so radios is one of the things. We know we want, we put that in there, more of a guard presence. But they are doing the research, they're working with Intralogic, so they can be looking through our cameras. So these meetings are ongoing, Southampton, and the Suffolk County Police are also involved, along with the state police. So some of this, we aren't going to be able to tell the public, but we are going to be having, I am going to be presenting on this in a couple of weeks. Not everything will be able to tell the public, because some of this, we've got to kind of keep close to the vest. But we wanted to make sure we had ample amounts of funding available when we get to that point. We also think the radios may be largely funded through some grants that the East Hampton folks are working on securing for us. So some of this also may be coming from the federal and state governments as well, which is good because they do understand the plight of public schools and what our police agencies are up against. But we wanted to make sure that we had enough funding. So it is still in kind of that development stage because it's complicated. When you start working with the police and how hard they're working on this, they really feel the plight of public schools, and they really want to work in cooperation with us. But when you start talking to like the 911 operators and what has worked, what has been successful in making sure active shooters were not successful in school districts, you get really into the weeds on it. So we want to make sure we had ample funding. So some of this is evolving. We don't have like direct answers on some of it, and some of it we do have direct answers on. So one of them was increased security guard presence. We know the radio channels are going to be vital because our 911 operators are saying the first thing that goes down is your phones, because everybody starts calling at once. So I hope that helps.
So the other thing that I just wanted to add is that we will, we do have a security update on the agenda for the next meeting, which is May 21st. So if there's anybody in the public that would like to come and see that presentation, that would be a good time to mark a calendar.
To answer your second question, the numbers that I presented are real numbers that we can prove based on contract renewals. And so I want to just give you an example for this year where we are and what we're looking at for 1819 in each of the major categories of tuition. So for this year, private placements, the total amount that we're taking in in private placements is $255,000. Wayne Scott students, $230,000. Sagaponik, $120,000. Amagansett, $50,000. So the total revenue for this year, it's $401,680. So now for next year, well, we already got contractual commitments on. Private, we went up to $261,411. Wayne Scott, $295,000. So right there, that's a $65,000 increase. Sagaponik, it went down just a little bit, $116,595. And Amagansett is 51,000. So when you add all those together, it's $724,508 versus $401,680.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Can I add something to explanation that you shared last time, which created clarity for me because I had the same question? The numbers that were in this year's budget was not based on actual, but very conservative projections. And next year's budget is reflective of what actually happened this year, which was the huge increase. So it's not really an apples-to-apples from a forecasting perspective, because one was very conservative and one's based on actuals.
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
Makes sense.
Thanks.
And I'm a very conservative guy.
Any other questions for Dr. Kentor? Any budget?
I want to say thank you to Dr. Kentor, who came in midway through budget season and then had to build a 40 million-plus budget with zero-based. And then I had to have it explained to him that we not only have to justify every budget through every program, but then we also have to put every bit of it online. And he was like, okay, I can do that. So it was a lot of 11 o'clock nights, late nights, night after night. And I think he really climbed a lot of steep hills to make this happen. And I really want to say how appreciative I was, and I'm sure the board is, too. Thank you very much.
Oh, it's been wonderful. Working with you, Katie, and the whole staff and the board, thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. So I think we'll call the budget hearing to an end. That gives us a little bit of a break between now and the educational meeting. So-
Do you need to adjourn this or no?
No.
I have a question. There was something that we-
There was something that we were going to be proposing going into executive session and discuss a personnel issue afterwards. Is there enough time, do you think, to do that now?
Awesome.
Do that now and then we don't have to be on the phone with Tom Waltz, right?
No.
Oh, was it with Tom?
No.
No.
Because I mean, we might...
Uh, yeah, no, I think it's a good idea. Since we've got 20 minutes, we can at least get started on some of these things. So can I get a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss the appointment of a particular person?
Same way.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We take it to the back first.
Yes.
You motion?
To reconvene from executive session?
Same way.
Nice work.
Can I get a second? All those in favor? Any opposed? All right, motion carries. All right, we move... Sorry for the delay. Thank you, everybody, for their patience. We're going to move into the educational meeting. Let's start with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. So first, can we start with public input one? Public input one? You want to come up?
Hello.
Sounds good. So I just want to give you a little bit of direction. If you wouldn't mind stating your name for the camera and recognize that you are being recorded. Please keep your... Yep, that's the camera.
Hello.
Keep your comments to three minutes.
Yeah.
Director comments to the board president, which is me.
Okay.
And recognize that we may not respond or discuss the comments that you have. And we ask that you do not discuss personnel or individual students.
Absolutely.
Go ahead.
Good. Hello. Hello, everyone. Hello, camera. My name is Julian Barrettcliff. And I live here in Santa Barbara. I have a 12-year-old in the middle school, Miles. I said this before, he's having a marvelous time. Thank you for all of that. That's great. And I'm also the parent of four-year-old twins, one of whom has autism. I also want to say, by the way, on the positive side, I'm a massive fan of the STEAM thing and I'm really glad it's happening. And I'll wave as many flags as I can on that subject. So I'd like to start with a correction. Because last time I stood up here and spoke, I told you that the crisis in autism had escalated to the point where one in 68 children now had autism. And talked about the potentially dire consequences of that, both social and financial in terms of school budget. So my correction is that it turned out I was wrong. The Center for Disease Control has just republished its latest findings. And we're now up to one in 59. So point being that the water continues to rise around us. I... Last time I stood up and spoke here, a couple of other families spoke about their own specific experiences. And then I spoke in more general terms about the need for intensive therapy at an early age. And my great concern about the potentially dire financial consequences of not offering that therapy because the thing snowballs downhill. And if you end up with people going into residential programs, the dollars skyrocket. So I talked about those numbers. $1.65 million per child of downside for every ball dropped. At the end of myself and other people speaking about that, we came away from that meeting. And then I gather subsequently, the statement was read out. And this is the statement I'd like to take issue with this evening, a specific part of that statement. So I'll just... It's a very brief quote, but I'll just read it. "Special education law has a very specific guidance and regulations that govern the program. Parents within the district that have concerns about special education programming need to take their concerns to the committee for special education and the superintendent. The Board of Education isn't authorized to make special education placements or alter programming." I guess the point at which I really pick up on that is the idea that the board isn't authorized to alter programming. So I went and looked it up. So this is Section 200 of the New York State Department of Education Regulations. And Section 200 is specifically about public school board responsibilities with respect to special needs students. I'd be very happy to leave it for whoever would like it.
I'd take that point, Julie.
And I've chosen a charming shade of yellow to highlight various parts of it. I hope you like the color. So... And I guess my basic point here was, first of all, that flatly refutes the notion. And I'll finish now, if that's my three minutes. So please take a look at it. I'd be happy to discuss it further. But nothing could be further from the truth, in my opinion, and certainly upon reading that. And I'd also like to mention in terms of programming, in inverted commas, and people not being responsible for it. You know, the International Baccalaureate is a program. Sports is a program. And special needs is a program. I view them in equal measure. And I think they should be treated thus. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else for public input one? So the special ed process is on the agenda for today. But I think the first thing on the agenda is STEAM, correct?
Yes. Yep. And we know and love you, but if you would start off by introducing yourself, that would be awesome.
My name is Christopher Klein. I'm a third grade teacher at the elementary school. On Tuesday afternoons, I teach a makers' fair club to third grade, fourth grade, and fifth grade students.
And I'm Heidi Wilson. I'm the library media specialist at the elementary school. And I see all of the children, but I also do robotics after school.
And both of them, when they were going through the interview process, I asked the question about STEAM and they both lit up like Christmas trees. And I was like, "Oh, good." And they came through on everything they promised they would do. So go ahead.
My first introduction to STEAM education was a makers' fair. I visited Queens, New York last September for the International Makers' Fair. If you don't know what makers' fairs are, they happen all around the world. In our country, they happen in San Francisco, Miami, and New York City, and I think in Boston. And it's a Friday, Saturday, and Sunday event. Kind of like a festival of imagination and creation where people of all ages have a chance to showcase things that they've made from their homes. And the examples range from LED jewelry, like earrings, to clothing, to massive dinosaurs that are made out of robotics equipment and all kinds of different things. Also, schools get involved very much as well. And they usually have tables or vendor tents where students can come show off what they've made at school. So my club is an eight-week club. I'm in the third session of our after-school clubs. Students learn new skills based around the idea of creating and building new designs. And it's individual and group work-based. Makers' fairs are something that is slowly finding their way into schools. There was one recently at the Beatty Community School in Aquabon about two weekends ago. And definitely one of my hopes for bringing the makers' fair to the elementary school is hopefully one day we could have our own little mini makers' fair in collaboration with maybe the high school and the middle school. But that's definitely a goal that I've had in mind. In the classroom, we teach the students about the design method and the design process, which is something I want to talk about for just a moment. On my first day of my club, I showed my students this slide and described to them what the design process was in terms of the makers' fair and things that we would be doing in our after-school club. It teaches the students how to think through a problem. So they start with something that they want to make, which might be a solution to a problem or it might just be something for fun. The first project that we did the first Tuesday was making paper circuits. And I'll show you an example of that shortly. The newest thing that we're making right now are duct tape wallets, which are kind of sound maybe boring, but they're a lot of fun for kids and it helps them to get really involved in the design process. After they figure out what they want to do, they collect a bunch of information, either on their own or with a partner or a group. They then begin to brainstorm and draw up a design. I work at the Hay Ground Camp in the summer. And in the afternoons, I work in the woodshop. And we always... And I've been there for 14 years. We always start with drawing a picture. The kids never just go get wood and start building something. They always start by designing something on paper first. It sounds so old-school and archaic, maybe with all the technology and all the things that we have today. But it's still the place where the ideas begin from. After that, they begin to develop their idea. They actually start to make something. And then the part that really interests me is the feedback piece. And that's where maybe their design doesn't work right away and they have to kind of go back to the drawing board or change some things. It gives them an opportunity for constructive feedback from their peers. I was telling some people recently that when my students come into this club on Tuesday afternoons, they're not necessarily... I think in the hallway, they're talking about what their day was like because they waited for me to start the club. But once they get going with the projects, they quickly talk about just the projects themselves. So that's nothing that I orchestrated or asked them to do. It's just the sheer nature of being involved in an activity like that, I think, that really just allows them to get excited about what they're doing. Most importantly, I think the design process is a model for dealing with many challenges in life. I think we can all relate to the design process in some way to how we kind of deal with things in our lives outside of work or outside of school for us teachers. My hope is that I can kind of teach the kids to communicate better with one another through these projects, through using the design process. And although I don't know if that's necessarily an effect meant to have by having STEAM education, I think it's something that's important as educators to always try to relate what we're learning in the classroom to our lives in general. So paper circuits... I forget like where I came across these. I think I was just researching different ideas. But it struck me as something so cool and awesome for kids to try to do. Basically, if you've ever gotten a card from like a Hallmark store or from CVS that has like a tune that plays, like when you open it, like a song or something like that, that has a paper circuit on the inside of it. Either you press a button or you open the card and something comes out that's made by electronics. For the ones that we did, we tried to illuminate a picture or a phrase if the kids wanted to write like a thank you note or something like that. So first, when I asked them to think of their idea, they had to think of a picture or a phrase that they wanted to illuminate with LED lights. This is an example I showed them of the robot. So there's two lights for its eyes. That's where the LED lights would be. The paper circuit, you can't see it. It's on the backside of that piece of paper right there. This is Samantha working on her cat. So she's going to illuminate the eyes of her cat. And it was very simple. We drew the picture on one side of the cardstock paper and then put the paper circuit on the other side. Duct tape wallets, which we're working on right now, are something kind of more simple. And we watched a really great video on this from the Duct Tape Company. They're really getting into it. And using that as a way to kind of help the kids to show them that there's lots of things to learn out there, not just like silly videos to watch like when they're at home or whatever. But they quickly got into it. They were very patient, working with one another, waiting for me to cut the tape into the right size and everything. We're still working on this one right now. Gold was a popular color for the duct tape wallets. I thought green would be because it means money, but it doesn't really work out. And that's where we are now. So we have some other projects down the line. But as a teacher, I have to say that this is such a fabulous way to get the kids outside of their bubble and to get girls involved in science, technology, engineering, and boys as well. And just to have the third grade, the fourth grade, and the fifth grade collaborating. To see some... I have two of my students in this class. And it's just phenomenal to see them working with older kids. There's some kind of mentorship there probably and it's just terrific. And I hope that one day we can kind of come full circle with the middle school and the high school programs as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thank you.
So I'm going to just jump into my next piece, which in the library, we started off the year working on teamwork and communication because in order to do anything with STEAM, it's 99% of the time you're doing it in a team. It's very rare that you're on your own. You have people that you have to check in with. You have people that you brainstorm with. So a lot of the things that we did in the library to start the year were, you know, mind control, so meditation. We all know that that's really important to set your mind in a good place before you start any task. We did a blind draw, which actually, if you can go ahead, I'll just go through what we did. So there's the kids meditating somewhat. That is a kindergarten group after all. So this was the blind draw. And as you can see, they're back to back. And one student has a picture on their paper and the other student has to draw it just by being told what's on the paper. And the first time they do it, it is absolutely not even remotely the same. But then they start... We allow them to talk and communicate and say, "What didn't you understand when I said it?" Because of course, the person giving the directions thinks they did a great job of giving directions. And the person behind is like, "That's not at all what you communicated." And as it goes on, they do like three or four in the time that I have them. By the end, they get pretty close. I mean, even if they get a little more complicated, there's some resemblance in the pictures. And this is them talking to each other, different picture. And you can't really see what hers is, but they were laughing because they were not remotely the same. I love this one because they were like hands over each other. And I don't get to take as many pictures as I'd like. I tried really hard to keep my phone with me. But it's busy and it's not always what I want it to be. So the next thing is we always have Legos. Mark Watson also does a Lego club after school and the kids love that. But we have Legos there because they're so great in and of themselves. But what's happened with Legos is that kids just go and they play with them. Also great, such wonderful things. They build on their own, they create on their own. But they also are missing the idea of giving that task. So what I did for the little guys is they had a task card. And I hope I put some in there. So there's a task card and these are my first graders. And that one was, I think, build an animal, maybe. There's build fruit. That was build a rainbow. And his partner left, but that was where he was left with. And they always have to work together. Almost all of my tasks are together because that's really important. And it's so difficult for them because if you have to build an animal and somebody wants to build a dog, but the other person wants to build a rabbit, they have to come to a mutual understanding. And that's where a lot of my time with these comes in, is making them work together, not so much with the outcome of the project. This one I loved because it was the hardest task and it was just build something with four Legos. So they had a whole bucket in front of them and they had to pick just four Legos to build with. And some kids were like, "Yeah, it's like a person." And it was not at all, but they just wanted the task to be done. And she was like, "It's a sword." And then I showed it to the class and they're like, "It looks like a shovel. It looks like a flower. It looks like a sword." And so she was like, "It's all those things." And she was so excited that with her four Legos, she got all those things accomplished. There's a couple... You can go through these quick. That's a squid. That's an apple. That was a fruit, a pineapple. I don't know what that was, but these two work so well together that I didn't care. They were just phenomenal. So this one I wanted to point out because I kept this one. All the other ones, they have to tear them apart because we don't save anything unless you're in the Lego club. Otherwise, we'd have no Legos left and the whole place would be covered. But this was a tree. And I did this with K-12 and a couple of third grades, I think. And they're the only ones that got a tree to stand upright that was more than four blocks high. Because as kindergartners, they know they have to build it strong. Third graders could not get that tree to stand up for the life of them because they wanted to build it tall and it just kept falling over. So I used it as a, "Your foundation is super important." And we talked about the foundation of anything. Like you can't learn calculus if you don't know how to add. And that's just kind of the basis for everything. This is... I love the progression of this. If you just go through them. They're building a bridge. And these are first graders. And they totally worked together to build that beautiful bridge. And so this is the next Lego challenge I did. In between those mats that are now standing upright are... Is a construction of some kind that I made. And we actually did this with the teachers at morning program too, which was really funny. So the structure is hidden from the students. And they have one person that's the eye of the group. They can't touch any of the blocks. They can only take one step away from it. The rest of the group can't see it. And they have to communicate what to build to the rest of the kids. and they have to communicate what to build to the rest of the kids. So we'll just skip through it really quick just because of time. This is the spaghetti challenge, which is just a great one. They get 15 pieces of spaghetti, a yard of tape, and a yard of string. And they have to make the tallest spaghetti building. Doesn't always go, oh, and a marshmallow has to go on top. Doesn't always go as planned, as you could see from the expressions, they're holding it up because it wouldn't stay up. But the fifth graders loved it, there was multiple hands on that one, and that one totally fell over. But as you can see, they just love doing this. And it was 15 minutes of them having to work together to come up with something, which I think is just fantastic. So this is the last like hands-on build thing that I did. I gave them a piece of aluminum foil and a certain amount to follow, I think, pipe cleaners. The kids came up with anything from boats to, somebody did the Constitution, which was really interesting. They made all of the things squiggly lines and put it on the roll, and then they rolled it up. We had basketball hoops and all sorts of stuff, so you can go ahead. And then they had to present, so they had 10 minutes to build, five minutes to write up their story, three minutes each to present. And so it was a quick 40 minutes, but it was a lot of fun, as you can see. We always have fun, that's the basketball hoop, which I thought was really pretty clever. Yeah, all of them presenting. Sorry, I just love them. There's the Constitution. And that was a cheapie. Okay, so Hour of Code we did in December, it's a worldwide event. Millions, almost, we're almost into the billions of people worldwide have participated in this. It was the first time our school had officially at that level participated. Everybody from kindergarten all the way to fifth grade did, even including the multi-age class. We, every kid did, logged on to code.org and participated at some level. So I set up the kids at different levels. Some of the kids participate in the coding class at the John Jermaine Library. So those kids, when they came in, they were rocking through their levels, so I just bumped them up, and they worked at their level. Coding is such an important thing. I won't go into the stats at the bottom, I'm sure you guys know them, but if not, you can have this and look it up. But code, hourofcode.org has, nope, dot com, has all the statistics that you could possibly want and need with all the resources behind it. But basically, what it comes down to is when it comes to coding in elementary school and middle school, 50% of the kids are female, 50% of the kids are male. And then when you get to college, it's 20 to 80 at best. But if they take a computer science course in high school, the number jumps significantly. Of the kids that take those, it's like an eight times as many. So it's just so important that we do continue to offer the computer science classes that we have here. And hopefully, we'll have more kids now that they've been exposed to it at this level enjoying that. And as you can see, they really did. So my robotics club meets after school on Tuesday. We use the NXT Lego robotics that have been here for many, many years. We started my first group, Ms. Rick, who did it in the past, said to me, well, you might get a girl or two. And I said, really? And he said, yeah, so he came and so he's like, how Lego club go today? I said, seven girls and seven boys. He's like, really? And it was the most amazing group I've worked with all year. They, they did tend to go girl, boy, except for one group, girl, girl, boy, boy for one group. But they, they're fantastic. So they start from having the box with just the pieces, they have to build a robot first. Depending on the group, it can take one class, two classes, some even go into the third. And then they have to do that by following directions. To be fair, I don't give them a whole lot of help. I told, tell them the directions, they're in front of you, I'll help you if it gets really off track. But they're there, you have to look it up and figure it out yourself. It's not going to be, I'm not mom that's going to go and say, okay, I'll just fix it, you work on it. And they do, and they really are very persistent about it. Once they build the robot, we give them tasks. So the first task is they have to get it across the room and back. Then they have to do a figure eight, a letter, and then we get to the cool stuff with the sensors, which is they have to follow a maze line, so when it gets to a black line, you have to program it to go left or right until it gets itself out of the maze. No, I only have eight weeks with them, so that's about as far as we get. But hopefully, next year, we can, you know, finagle it a little more. I do have some girls who had, came up after and really went a lot further, they came up at lunchtime. And we set up, the tech guys are great, and they set up, they mindstorms on the computers in my library for them. So they come through and can code there at lunch. I know Chris had mentioned about the link in the full circle, getting the middle school and high school involved. And I knew that was going to happen. My son Colby is on the high school robotics team, and it has been, I'm probably going to get choked up, but amazing for him. And he comes down now and helps, and the other kids are going to start doing that too. They're going to start helping with the little robotics kids because it, when he walks in and the kids see him, they're like, Colby! And he's like, yes, that's me, you know, like it's a big booster for him as the ninth grade techie, you know? He's definitely not the star of the football team, but this is where he shines. And I think it gives them the opportunity to kind of feel that as well. And so he's been helping on all ends of it. He helped the one group that was really far ahead do the sensors, which made them think that they were pretty hot stuff. This is the group that comes at lunch, that was coming at lunch. I wish that worked because that was a video, but we'll figure it out and send it. Okay, so the next thing that I did, or we're still finishing up now, is a research project with third and fourth graders. So we went over verified sites, did the whole library thing, researched for a few weeks, wrote up what we needed to write up. I taught them how to bullet in a presentation rather than it just saying George Washington was born, just born in this year, married this person, showed them the difference between bulleting and sentencing, which was really difficult for them to not put it in sentences after they've been drilled to do so. And then they put it on a slide. Once the slide was done, they had to write up in words a presentation that was more exciting than just bullets. So they then presented it in video form. So I taught them how to use WeVideo, which is something that they use here in the middle school. When Colby came over, he said, you know, we just really didn't know how to use it, so I said, well, let's get this going earlier. And they love it, and for good reason, they get to see themselves on camera. However, I will say, it is funny because it is so hard for them to see themselves being videotaped. It's hysteria for the first six takes. And I have one group that's come up to the library and literally redone their video, it's 20 second video by the way, like 12 times because they just can't get it right. But it's such a great process for them because they're on their own, they're doing their thing, and it's their creative. I didn't say you had to do anything, it just had to have a title, and it had to have their video and slide in it. So this is a few of my kids working on it. Can we get that video to run? Because it's just really quick. If we can, it's not the end of the world. But you'll get to see what we're talking about. Awesome. So this is on Tina Turner, which is really exciting. So that's the slide with their bullets.
Our presentation is about Tina Turner by Leila, Irena, and Olivia. Tina Turner was a singer, she was born in Tennessee in 1939. Her parents Floyd and Salma Bullock split up and left Tina and her sister to be raised by their grandmother. When her grandmother died in the early 1950s, Tina moved to safety in Missouri. She started performing in the 1950s. Tina Turner lost her singing in 1970s, was elected as Rock and Roll Hall of Fame in 1991. We hope you enjoy our presentation.
So I love this, I love this because I taught them how to do transitions. If they each had a paragraph that they were saying, they could put, do each individual video, and then do a transition in between each one, and they said, we just don't like the transition. It makes us look like it's ending and starting again. So they decided to do this all on their own, they came back and showed it to me, and I just thought it was so awesome. Uh-oh, did we run out of slide, my slides?
You're on the power, can I go back down to Chrome on the bottom?
It's totally my fault. Sorry, Mr. Fisher. It's all my fault. All right, well, I'll keep talking while they fix, because I can do that. So the next thing is little bits that we did, and I cannot tell you enough about little bits. They are so STEAM, it's incredible. You can't, I don't think you can get more STEAM than little bits. They are science, obviously, the first time we work with them, we go through the whole, what circuits are, how circuits work. You know, how you have to have a closed circuit versus an open circuit. We talk about light switches, they go over and they turn them on and off, is it closed, is it open? And these are little bits, for those of you who don't know, these are some of the basic kits. And inside, they're just little modules, so it comes with power source, inputs and outputs. So inputs would be things like switches, buzzers, slides. And then outputs would be things like this really annoying buzzer, lights, and motors to that turn. And they just love them, they really love them. So I've done this with third, fourth, and fifth graders. I'll come back to that. I did this with third, fourth, and fifth graders, and they just love it. So the first few classes, or first class that we do, are two classes. We go over the science piece of it, and then they build specific exercises. So one is like a tickle machine, they have to set it up so that a feather rotates. Another one is a buzzer handshaker, where they have to attach it to the arm and shake somebody's hand. They have to make a bike with a, you know, Dixie cup, a bike light with a Dixie cup. So it's very specific things that they have to figure out how to make happen. And then from there, the fifth graders started on their own projects, which all, the only requirements was it had to be about this big, it couldn't be bigger than that, and it had to do something. And I couldn't see a lot of the little bits, so those are the only requirements for the project. And they all kind of looked at me a little bit because there was no real guidelines for them. Of course, they had to work in groups, but it has been unbelievable. And I say that wholeheartedly as I've been teaching for a really long time. This has been one of my favorite things to have ever done. I have some of them here, and I won't go crazy into it, and if you want to keep flipping, because I do have a million pictures on this. This is a beatbox robot that if you turn it on, which by the way, the battery's hidden in the back. But if you turn it on, it looks like a beatbox, and it does make noise. Of course, I just made this wall fall apart. But the thing that I love the best, I pulled it apart so it's not lighting up anymore. But the thing that I love the best is it, there's a counter up here, and I said to them, what's the counter for? And they're like, it's the channel, Mrs. Wilson, it's the channel on the, I was like, do you even know what a boombox is? So that's, this is the volume, it does nothing, but it's the volume, this is the channel, and it lights up when I don't disconnect the battery. This is not finished, they actually had a setback today, but they did want me to bring it. This was a group that was very adamant, I said, I'm going to take some to the board meeting, and this group wanted me to. But this is a unicorn that when you push the button, it blows out confetti, rainbow confetti. The only problem with it is the hole's a little deep and the fan doesn't blow enough, so they have to put something in there and just have the confetti rest on top. So that's what that one is. And now, oh, this is a lava lamp, which is a perfect example of exactly what we were looking for. They turned it into a, my goodness, why aren't none of these working right now? Because I'm so not good at keeping them together. Anyway, it lights up, one of my fingers aren't jiggling. But this is my all-time favorite, and this is why I love this. It is science, it is technology, it is art, it is everything you could possibly do because this started out here, and they were bouncing this ball across the room a gajillion times trying to figure out the trajectory to get the ball to fall into here. And originally, they cut a hole in this, and they decided that was such a bad idea because the counter, they have a sensor, a light sensor in there, but it wasn't counting well enough because when it goes through, it didn't hit the light sensor enough. So then they had to make it so that it stops in here. But when you turn it on and it hits in here, it counts how many baskets you make. So this was like, to me, the best project to watch unfold. If I could have had like a nice stop cap, stop action camera going on that, that would have been awesome. So that's where the little bits are going. I won't make you back up, but at lunchtime, we do a bunch of games, and I love it. Checkers, Qubits, chess is coming up. The kids just love coming up at lunch, it gets them out of their classroom. And the best thing, I was saying this to Chris the other day, we don't realize it, we're such a small school and you think everybody knows everybody. But I had a first grader come upstairs, and he's the cutest kid ever, and he looks over, he's like, I have no idea who that is. And I said, she's in your class? And he's like, no, she's not. And he walks over, and he's like, my name's Jackson, what's your name? And I thought, how crazy is it that first graders don't know each other? But they weren't in the same class last year, they're not in the same gym class together. They were in the opposite one, and he got to meet her. They had such a ball, playing against each other, but getting to know each other. And he's like, see you later, it's nice meeting you, as they left. And that, I mean, I can't, that's my way, I spend lunch that way every day. And this is not on the slide, but I know that we're talking about technology in a bigger sense. And two of the things that we've gotten in the library recently, and this goes to reading because I want everybody to know that the amount of traffic in our library for reading is increased every single month. So it's not all technology, reading is definitely our, still our first priority in the library. But we have audiobooks and playaways. And I took some of the old iPads that weren't really being overly utilized and put a bunch of audiobooks on them, and the kids love it. We have a fifth grade class right now who's reading the same book on a fifth or sixth grade level, but they're able to do that by using audiobooks. Because let's be honest, if a kid can't read on a fifth grade level, and they read on a third grade level, they can't communicate in that same book, you know, jargon. And that's where they want to be, if they can talk in it, let them be in it. So this has really helped facilitate that for the one classroom that's using it right now, the teacher's very thrilled with it. So I'm sure there's more, but I talked really long, and I just, I love what we're doing and I love where we're going. And I really hope that you guys love it too.
Thank you.
Oh my God, what a goddess, the library!
Hi, my name's Emilio, I'm the technology education teacher here at Pearson Middle School and High School. And while I was driving to work today, I heard about this new study from the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation. And it said the most successful people in the United States are the people who followed up on their passion and their interest in middle school and high school. And I started thinking about that, and if we could show students and help students what their interests are and help them with the tools so that they can be passionate, hopefully, they'll have a successful career. Now, with the caveat, they didn't say what success was. I don't know if it's happiness, or money, or a combination of both, but we'll be looking into that. So when you talk about STEM, it means a lot of different things to a lot of different people. I focus in primarily on the T and E, the technology and engineering in STEM. Usually, when you hear STEM, you, they're talking about science and math. So I'm going to explain the difference, and I'm going to show you how we bring the science and math into the technology class with Project Based Learning. So there's a ton of magazines and articles out there about the STEM qualified shortage out there, the careers, the skill gap, everywhere you turn around, you'll see stuff about STEM. So I don't want to spend a lot of time on this, but I'll show you some other things of where it's going. So again, if you ask every teacher what STEM means, you'll get different answers. Ultimately, it's about problem solving, innovation, learning, and taking things to the next level. So it used to be MSD, Math, Science, and Technology, then it became Technology Education. After that, it became STEM, and now you hear it with the A for Arts, and now you hear it for R for Research. Your schools have started to add that, and that reminds me of the IB program, so. They even have magazines out there about STEM careers, STEM jobs. So there are a lot of curriculums out there already developed for STEM. Project Lead the Way is the leading STEM curriculum in the country. I'm certified in more Project Lead the Way areas than anyone else in Long Island. The next one is Engineering by Design, also certified in that. Then you have the Next Generation Science Standards, you have New York Technology Associations, the International Associations. The good news about this is I have all the knowledge because I've been to a lot of the trainings, and I could take what I want from those different curriculums and bring it into the classroom. And these are all fee-based curriculums too. So when I went to school, it used to be called SHOP, then it became Industrial Arts, then Technology Education, and now they're changing it to Technology and Engineering. And really, it's the study of the man-made world, innovations and inventions, okay? And basically, it's to satisfy human needs and wants, because if there wasn't a want or a need, we wouldn't be doing it. So here's a slide, it talks about the specific disciplines in STEM. And as you can see, the majority of it is in computer science and mathematics, and the other areas, engineering. These are the two areas that I'm going to focus in on. So you can't talk about STEM without talking about Makerspace, you heard about the Maker Faire. So Makerspace is a basically collaborative space, it's student-led, they're the initiators, and they're driven by learning. And I would be the facilitator, and that's basically kind of what we're building downstairs in the technology lab, a place where students can come and build things and learn from it. So here's an example of a project, and this is how it all starts, and it goes back to, did they leave already? Okay, the elementary school, oh, there they are, the elementary school, we talk about drawing, right? So students have to learn technical drawing, drawing is a form of communication. So they start off with a two-dimensional drawing over here, and they work their way into a three-dimensional drawing, an isographic drawing, and then they go down and they start drawing on the computer. So we start off simple, and we keep adding complexity to the objects that they're drawing. And again, they realize the computer won't draw it for you, it'll draw it quicker, more accurately, easier to make changes. And here's the key, it can be converted to machine code, and I'll go over that within a second. So they're going to be using programs like Autodesk Fusion 360, it's free to the education community. It's what they call a CAD program, computer aided drawing. And on the backend is CAM, computer aided manufacturing. So it means whenever they can draw, they can then manufacture, whether it's by hand or some type of technology. So you might hear from a geometry teacher, I heard a student say, when am I ever going to use coordinate geometry in real life? So I have some examples. They can use coordinate geometry with something called a CNC machine, this is what we just got the grant for. They can also use it for robotics guidance systems, how to track the They can also use it for robotics guidance systems, how to track the robots into different places. So over here, some examples of things that can be made on the CNC machine. Now, my goal is not to have students become sign makers, but is to give them ideas of, okay, let me start out with something simple. And you notice there's no logos or any, uh, cliparts or graphics on it. All that can be added on. And this is all coordinate geometry. So they're telling the machine where to go, where to cut it out, okay? And this is just the start. So if they can do this something with a sign that gets them interested, what else can they do with it? Well, they wanna make parts for their robots. They can then start drawing the parts for the robots or any of the other projects. So that's the direction we want the students to, to head in. And we wanna get them hooked with the signs and being creative, so. So the technology that we use, this is the CNC machine. This is what these signs were cut on. Uh, we're working on getting a, uh, 3D printer. Uh, next year, I'll be working on a grant for a laser engraver and it's all done on the computer. And whatever you can draw, again, you can manufacture. So I'm hoping it unleashes the creativity of the students. Whatever, whatever they can think of, they can, they can build. And for me, that means I have to constantly keep getting updated on technology, what's happening. So I go around, I visit a lot of different schools. I'm always networking with people. The summer plans, I'm going to some robotics training, Pi Academy, which I'll get into in a minute. Uh, code.org has trainings. The only bad part about it is taxes. I used to get tax write-offs for all this stuff. So computer science, we talked about that. Fifty-two percent of the jobs are gonna be in computer science. And so what kind of pie do you want your students to have, your son or your daughter? And so when I refer to pie, it's Raspberry Pi now. So you get the picture of pie, but the Raspberry Pi is basically a little thirty-five dollar microcomputer. And they could hook it up to a screen and a keyboard, joysticks, controllers. So I'll be attending that training this summer. And they also have things like Arduino's. An Arduino is a little device like this. It's a circuit board with inputs and outputs. It's, uh, used on things like robots. And students are learning how to program the Arduino's, the inputs and the outputs, to help it make decisions and do different things, whether it's light up something, have the robot go in a certain direction. So it's called physical computers as to the latest buzzword they're using with that. So, uh, I think it was last year, the year before, I went to a technology summit. Google was there and it's, basically you'll see this repeated a couple of times. The average salary is around ninety-eight thousand dollars for somebody in computer science going right out of school. And oops, ninety percent of the parents want their students, their, their son and daughter to learn computer programming in school. And here's, here's what's ironic about it. Most schools don't offer computer coding programming. I know, I know we do here. But majority of, it peaked around in nineteen ninety, two thousand. For some reason, it dropped off. And even on the AP, you see the computer science is relatively flat and all the other APs are going up. So there's organizations out there like code.org. And just as Heidi said, they start off early in the third and fifth grade with, uh, computer, uh, programming. And they do higher on their standardized tests. So they do better on standardized tests. And there's a huge demand out there. Uh, you can see there's four hundred thousand people who'd be graduating with computer science degrees and, again, as you mentioned, not many women. There's going to be over one point four million jobs. So tons of jobs out there, great pay to start out with, right? Parents want it, want the students to have it. Just another thing about, another gallipole, ninety percent of the parents want students to have it. So how do you get the students interested in computer science, computer programming? Through robotics, okay? They start learning how to code in robotics and they realize it's not so bad, it's not so hard, and they can continue down that road. So, uh, what I did is, uh, this is, oh, this talks a little bit more about robotics. Uh, a lot of jobs are gonna be replaced by robots in the near, near future, even by twenty twenty. Uh, and that's okay because you, you don't want to be the person being replaced by the robot. You want to be the person being upskilled, learning how to program the robot, build the robot, maintain the robot. So right here, sixty percent of the jobs don't exist yet right now that students will have when they graduate. So more jobs they keep talking about and here's, uh, instead of you going to Starbucks and being waited on someone, they're gonna have robots serving you. So they're saying all the entry-level jobs, uh, bank teller, uh, food service type people will eventually be replaced by robots. So, uh, I was at a company called Rickland Machinery right here in Long Island. And they're even working on a cotton candy robot so they can replace people at tournaments, so they make the cotton candy. So it's, uh, it's out there. So in the future, maybe you get fired by a robot because big companies like Uber and, uh, Amazon, they're replacing middle management robots. They're using algorithms to figure out things, so it's all over. Uh, so what I did is I asked that schools let me, this is called an M-Bot. It's a simple, uh, little robot, but it's got a lot of sensors on it. It's got these, uh, these eyes, ultrasonic range finders. Uh, it's got line tracking capabilities, it's got motors. It basically has an Arduino built right into it and it can light up different things. So they lent me, uh, thirty of these and then we had the students, let's see if it's on the next slide, sitting there. We worked with Mr. Fisher's team. We get a bunch of iPads. And they were able to program their robots to drive around different courses, to line track. Uh, some of the students were pretty sharp and they even got their iPhones to, uh, program their robots. So doing a variety of different things with robots. You can see these, all the little blue boxes all over the place uh, from all the robots they, they lent me. So moving forward, this is something that actually is developed right here on Long Island by Stony Brook University College students. This is a very similar robot, right? You notice it's got the same eyes and everything else. And plug it in, it's got an Arduino on it. And it's obstacle voyage. Hands in front of it, wheels spin in different directions. So this was developed right here on Long Island. And all these parts were cut on what's called a laser cutter. So very cheap for, uh, students to make. You don't worry about breaking parts, things like that. This is another example of a robot and this is supposed to simulate, let me put my glasses off this. Simulate somebody walking, uh, like that. Again, it was built right at Stony Brook. They're working on a patent right now and they're gonna be releasing these to the public. So once you get them into robotics, hopefully they'll show more interest and then follow up with some type of computer coding classes. And another area that I focus in on is engineering, okay? Most people don't know it, most of the billionaires, the highest percentage of billionaires in the world took engineering in college. So just like you said earlier, problem solving, design process, the communication, the collaboration, all the skills that they used in engineering, you know, they didn't become engineers later in life. They went into some other type of business. But they use all those skills that they used, uh, learned while in college and then became billionaires, so. Uh, and this is the other part of the chart right over here. Twenty-seven percent of the jobs out there are in engineering. And here's some examples of engineering projects that we do in the class. Students build a structure. Uh, they design the structure on the computer. And then they, they could do computer simulation right over here. And they go back and forth, back and forth, until finally they get a structure that they're happy with. And then ultimately they build it, uh, they build it and then they test it. This is a national competition hosted right here on Long Island, Brookhaven National Labs. So they host that every year. Maglev, same thing. Most people don't know those high-speed bullet trains developed right on Long Island, Brookhaven National Labs. And they also have a Maglev competition. This is the first time I actually ever did the Maglev project. And the students build, uh, little electrified vehicles with propellers that levitate on this track. And they, uh, just like the trains, they get the electricity to power the, uh, motors, which turns to propellers and then they have a race. Uh, wind turbines is another project that we did this year. And in this scenario, students are designing right over here and building these wind turbines. And this is, uh, designed, these are designed for power. They're trying to lift weight. And here's another design. You can see there's a, uh, bucket of washers right there and there's a bucket over there. And they're seeing who could lift up the most amount of weight. Then they go out and they use this, which is, was out in the hallway. And same thing, but this one is not designed for weight, it's designed for speed. And they use things like simple machines that you can't tell, but there's different gears on here. They're using gear ratios to turn a generator to, uh, produce electricity. And then we actually capture the electricity, uh, the data right on, uh, with a probe called Vernia. And they have a little friendly competition, who can create the most amount of electricity. So these are some other student projects. This is a skimmer project that I do with the seventh grade. They, they absolutely love it. They launch their skimmers down the hall. And in this project, they're look, learning about Bernoulli's effect, how an airplane wing works, about design process, problem solving. And they keep going and building and see, and they launch, it's hard to see, but they're little manila folder skimmers. And they launch about two hundred feet. They go actually all the way across the gym if they can get up into the gym. It's not busy. Another project where students learn, uh, fine motor skills. They build pens on the lathe. So, uh, they really enjoy that and they, they tend not to lose their pens after that, which is a nice thing. Uh, this is another, uh, design project we did where students, uh, had to design their own bedroom. This bedroom, they had a swimming pool inside, table, a whole bunch of things.
It's a Hamptons bedroom.
Yeah, yeah. So a whole bunch of different technology projects into, uh, you know, with the discipline of problem solving, design process. And then we also have the middle school robotics. These are more advanced robots than these. Uh, and that's the, uh, Legos. Uh, and the students took a little while. It was heavy lifting, getting it going, but we got it going. Uh, we got the Legos in. It was missing a few parts. I didn't realize the parts came from Europe. So it took a month and a half to get the parts. But in the meantime, uh, we had set up virtual software so the students could learn virtually on how to program their robot instead of waiting for the physical robot. And what, as you can see right down there, the virtual. So what I was told is that when students do things virtually, they're on the computer by themselves. And they lose that fear of embarrassment because if they take the robot, they put it on the floor and everybody's watching and they go to try and do something and it doesn't perform the way it does, they get embarrassed. So what they're doing is doing it virtually by themselves, trying it out, making sure that they have it working properly. And then they come over to the physical world. And then they have to learn the difference between the virtual world and the physical world. The virtual world, the batteries on the robots aren't dying, there's no dust on the floor, things like that. So then they have to start problem solving on this. So, and another great thing about the, uh, virtual world is everybody's doing their own programming. When you have robotics, usually it's two or three students per robot. So they have to share. There's always one person likes to program. Maybe the other person likes to build it and drive it. So with the virtual, everybody gets to do it, so. Any questions?
I have one question. Can I go backwards? How do those cards work? Picture by, then when you open them up, they sink?
Yeah, they, they just have, uh, either just open up and...
Yeah, where's the little thing in there?
It's in between the two, the back one.
If I come one day, you show me how that works?
Yes.
I'd love those.
Thank you so much.
We have two more.
Head didn't point out, he's also the middle school, um, robotics. So now we have a club, a middle school, the elementary robotics, the middle school robotics, and the high school robotics. So it all spirals up now, which is, um, I think will be great in the long term for the robotics competitions for high school. So that we're building capacity points from the elementary to middle school and then, then up through.
Do we still have the several Patriots clubs?
Yes, that's, um, we're not having Mr. Fisher present tonight though. Because we figured we'd be here all night. So we're just doing this mattering up.
Does this work with us too?
It won't, no, it's not connected.
And Bill, if you go ahead and introduce yourself too.
Good evening. Uh, Bill Rainey, sixth grade science teacher. So I'm gonna show you a little bit, little bit what we did today and, or this year and what I have kind of planned for the future. So if you notice, I have the word "stream" up here and it's kind of ironic that, uh, when I was thinking about putting the R in there, I didn't realize necessarily that they had it out there already. But then I did some research and the R represents some other different things to different, you know, people. Oh, that's not what I want to start with. Is that order? Hold on a second. Just kidding. Alright, there we go. Alright, so one of the major things we did with STEAM this year was the Rue Goldberg Fair. We had it back in November. Uh, some came there. Um, they actually, their shirts say "Make It Rain," uh, I was playing my name. It was an awesome time. Uh, next year, I already talked to the sixth graders and they want to make a, a committee for the seventh grade to come down and help me plan the whole thing, work with the incoming sixth graders, really make it even bigger and better with, you know, signs, help me with the grading. I was running all over the place. I didn't get time, you know, to take any pictures and I was trying to grade and... So there's so many more improvements we could make from next year, but the excitement was just awesome. If you were there in the gym and, you know, the kids were really into it. One of the main things that I loved about it was we used this Seesaw app. And the students would upload pictures or videos of their progress from, along the way from their home. And I'd be able to respond to whether it's on the weekend or at night. And just a quick say, "Oh, you have to add this," or "Add time," or "Add a step," or "Does this work?" Um, and it's a great, it can only be, it's secure, it can only be viewed by the participants if they're approved. Parents can link to it. Um, you can, you know, students can upload something and their parents get notification. They can see it, they can comment, but everything is safe. So the outside world can't see it. So I'll show you an example. So you can see over here, you have different folders they can go. So throughout the year, I might have them take pictures of, um, different air or potential energy, where they go outside and take pictures of shadows or trees or snow or all these different topics that we're doing throughout the year. We can make a different folder for it. And they can upload it and then share it with the class. So this was a group.
Science projects.
For good luck, for good luck.
Okay, whatever. Alright, science project, take two, go.
Come on, come on, come on.
Woo!
So they were just uploading constantly. And again, like you could just add, at home, like we watch TV, a little notification on my phone. I can respond to it. They have to add this, add that, you know, Olivia going through hers, um... Yeah, so it was just a lot of fun. This is another one. And some students were able to get it to work on the video and then the day of, they had trouble with it. So they were a little frustrated by it, but it was, it was still a ton of fun. So this app is just great. You can, you know, all the parents, I get great feedback from it. The kids love using it. Uh, we're currently in a maker month, May, maker month, get it? So, uh, like right now, we were building tetrahedral kites. So today, we're building the, the cells and they have to put it together and they're gonna upload on to Seesaw and, and continue that. So "stream," what is "stream"? What is the R? Now, you kind of took the wind at myself with the R, but the R is for research. Um, I really like this quote, "Wisdom is not a product of schooling, but of the lifelong attempt to acquire it." So it's great, all these things that we do in the class, but are they gonna take it outside the class? Are they gonna take it beyond their schooling? And I really think research, it's a big part of that. Being able to find the resources, being able to determine if the, it's credible information. Uh, being able to communicate the ideas, whether it's written or through art or just through talking to someone. Citing evidence is something we really focus on this year and next year. You know, a lot of times they just want to copy and paste and act like it's their idea, right? But they, they really need to get credit. So doing in-text citations, knowing where to find the information, you know, uh, whether it's quantitative or qualitative, being able to display in graphs, being able to display in writing. And then applying that knowledge to what they're currently doing or what they're gonna do in the future. So next year, it's all of that plus research. So what does the future hold? So again, I would like to continue the Rue Goldberg Fair next year, make it bigger and better. So, again, I would like to continue the Rube Goldberg Fair next year, make it bigger and better. We're trying to get Breakwater Yak Club, we've been with them a couple of times. We're hopefully gonna go there next week, or the week after. And then next year, we have a couple of times set up, so we're gonna incorporate sailing, the sea, the shoreline, you know, simple machines with sailing, getting on the water, testing the water, going to different locations, get the kids interested in maybe something that they're not used to. So, we're working with people there. Mars Generation, so we watched this great documentary this year, talked about the past space exploration, and then the future on Mars, so really bring more of that into the classroom. We were able to talk with someone from NASA this year, through Ms. Razor, she had a friend. So, we talked with them on Skype, and he was really able to take us through the Osiris Rex, which is this mission where they're trying to get to an asteroid and test it. So, really just bring a lot of more astronomy into the classroom. Like I said, we're in Maker Month, hopefully next week or the week after, doing Conductive Paint, which they have there, I forgot what school now, there or something. So, there's a company that does it, but we were gonna make it in the classroom. And right now, like I said, we're doing tetrahedral kites. Also, problem solving based on Sec Harbor. So, this year, we did de-icing the roads, we know that they use beet juice in town, so we looked at pickle juice, we looked at all these different other ways, maybe to see if something's better. Testing the water quality, and that brings up to the Mars as well, being able to filter the water. And then also had pollution runoff, is there a better way to do it in town? Google Classroom has been a big part of this year, like Seesaw, Quizlet for studying, Remind for, you know, reminding the parents. And then Kahoot and quizzes bring any fun. So, with that said, we're gonna play a game of Kahoot. So, everybody take out your phones or computers. Bring your hand, if you play Kahoot. I don't know where the speakers come out. So, you can either put your real name in, or a nickname if you're shy. So, go to, no, just go to the website, Kahoot.it. Says on the top. And there's gonna be six questions about the slides that you just saw, the things that I said, so. We're gonna see who's paying attention. Okay, so Kahoot.it, you put in the game code.
Want to put a nickname in?
Yeah, give it to the nickname, just don't make an annoying nickname, people kick you out. Or, the kids do that, so. Or your real name. Is everybody in?
Yep.
Parents, you're good? Really, I was hoping to bring a little prize for the winner, but I think I died. That color was the letter "R," that title slide. This is just the title slide on Kahoot as well. Wait seven seconds.
Which one is it, this?
Oh, yeah. No one got it right? Everybody got it right?
It was blue.
It was blue. Alright, I like that one. Alright, wisdom is not a product of schooling, but of the blank attempt to acquire it. Red is eternal, lifelong longing, I realized. Redeemed yourself on that one.
We kind of.
I don't understand how it works.
In which month was Rube Goldberg Fair held? Don't let the snowflakes trick you. So, homework's in the lead? Anybody wanna reveal what homework is?
No.
There you go.
Of course it is.
Homework?
This is easy. What does the "R" represent in "stream"? Two more questions. What is the, what is the app that my students use to document the progress of the Rube Goldberg machines? Quizlet, Seesaw, Instagram, T E M app. And last one, which of the following was not a stated aspect of research? That I had. I don't like so small. So, which one of these did I not have up? Cause it could be all.
So, how do the kids do this if they don't have phones?
Yeah. They have the laptop, the Chromebooks.
The Chromebooks?
Yeah.
Good job.
But, how are you making, because when I tried to go in, it's trying, it's trying to charge me. And I'm not even on there.
I don't know, it just answered the thank you tone. Well, you won.
No, I went into the site that you went up there.
You went to the app, to the website.
No, I didn't, I went into the website.
There was a button that you could go into the app, that's why. On the website, there was an option, I think, on the.
Well, if you put in Kahoot.
I'll show you after.
If you put in Kahoot.it, it only takes you to the game playing page, which is the end of the page. If you go to Kahoot, you can make an account, and you go. So, homework, you won, good job.
Thank you.
Whalers, second, Frogface.
Sorry.
Not that wrong.
Frogface, third, tell me we know each other. So, this side is quizzes, that write sites, that review for the week, you know, get the kids engaged to study. Just a lot of fun to do in class, whether it's science, you know, throw in some math, throw in some general knowledge. And the students have a lot of fun with it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Got one more? Questions?
That was great. Thank you so much. Well, I'm sorry, this isn't everything either. Sue, you want to introduce yourself as well?
Hi, I'm Sue Dup, I teach eighth grade and 12th grade here at Pearson. I am one of the mentors for the high school robotics program. As far as technology and stuff goes, I go to ISTI every year, which is the International Society for Technological Education. Go to their conference every year, where they present pretty much all of these programs for a week. So, you learn tons and tons of stuff. And myself and Ms. Droulin are doing Girls Who Code. As people said before, girls in the computer field, it's, I mean, there's huge gender disparity. And we're trying to work with that, with this club called Girls Who Code. We're getting to click the next slide. Maybe. Okay, so, what we do is we allow students to join a safe and supportive environment of peers. It's a big thing, because girls, if they're in computers and there's guys there, particularly when they're older, they shut down. And the girl'll be like, I can do it, and even if the girl can, a lot of times, they sit back, especially as they get older. So, it is a wonderful environment where they can learn. And they begin to see themselves as computer scientists, they develop resilience and leadership skills. The resilience is really important when it comes to coding, because you can spend days writing code, and when you run it, it doesn't work, cause there's a comma in the wrong place, right? And then you have to try to find that comma. And it's really hard, because the kids want to give up. A lot of times, they're just like, that's it. So, that's been, that's been great to see them sit down and have that, like, grit to get to it. They learn the concepts and functions that form the basis for programming languages. And they work in teams to design a computer science impact project that solves real world problems they care about, should say about there. It is not, so you'll see, like, the project we do, it's something that the kids feel strongly about, and as they design it. So, one of the programs we use is Scratch, hopefully this comes up. They all worked on my computer. But Scratch is developed by MIT, and this is a basic step for coding. And it's great for the kids, because the code is written in these puzzle pieces. Is this a pointer? Okay, so the code is written in puzzle pieces. So, if the puzzle pieces don't fit together, the code won't work. So, and then they can adjust the puzzle pieces, and the puzzle pieces are in the different colors. So, you can do motion, how it looks, the sounds, pen data, events control. So, and this is for your script, and then they have costumes, and then they have sound, and the kids use this to make a video. Of course, the first thing they all did was sound. I had to, meow, meow. They learned how to make the cat meow over and over and over again. We had a lot of meowing. Go back to the, so the next, alright, the next one is Thunkable. Is it good? Where we gonna go? Hopefully this works. If not, Thunkable is very similar to Scratch, except it's to build iOS apps for phones. So, the high school kids started using this. If it doesn't work, that's fine. Thunkable, it's the same concept, puzzle pieces, the kids can put it together, and it's just much more complex and much more involved. The students were developing an app that, that was for, like, mindfulness. They were developing a mindfulness app, they didn't get it done all the way, cause they wanted to add extra things. But each day, you would have a different screen that would come up, and they had Mindful Mondays, Wise Wednesdays, every day had like a little theme, and they had music and quotes and stuff that would go for it. That's okay, you can go back to the next. Next slide. Okay, so then, as it gets further along, this is Code Academy, and it teaches you how to build a website. And on the left, it gives you step-by-step directions, the students have to follow it, and it walks them through. This is a lot more complicated code, so once they are better with the building blocks, they can learn how to create the strings in here and make it work. And it gives them different samples. We had two, two eighth graders were working on their websites. And this was where I really saw that stick-with-it-ness come through. I had one student who, she like put together her whole little website, and she would put in text, it wasn't showing up. And it was because the text and the background color were the same, right? So, it took her, took her a long time to figure out how to take. At first, she didn't realize what was going on, and I was like, I think it's the same color. And she was like, okay. And then she couldn't figure out how to change the color, and then, and it was actually done in the directions. So, she followed the directions, and the directions were actually wrong. And so, it was great that she was able to figure out the directions given by Code Academy were incorrect, cause it made it the same color. And then, she had to go back and figure out how to fix it, so her words would come up in white on a pink background. And we talked about it in the club, and how it was so important to do that, and go back and figure out how to go through that process. And I'm like, and I'm like, it didn't take you that long? She's like, four days. She's like, it took me four days. And it's, you know, again, it's one little line of code, but for her to stick with it for that long, she didn't say, oh, I'm gonna start over, I'm gonna switch sites, I'm gonna do something else. She stuck with it. And for me, that's sometimes even bigger than the technology and the project. It's those life skills that they learn, and the sense of accomplishment that the kids get when they're able to problem solve and do that kind of stuff. So, the one project, next slide. So, this was our eighth graders, Abby and Abby, Abigail and Abby. They did, is it coming up? They did Devon and Blake talk about deforestation, and there should be a video right there. But this is on the Girls Who Code gallery, they did their problem. I don't know why, new project, oh, there we go. And here's their project. Again, this was all created by them. You have to hit the arrow, the flag to start, I think? Is it going? Hit the spacebar maybe? Come on, hello. My name is Blake. So, I'm a cat and a dragon, they're eighth grade, I don't know. So, so they created this video, and they had a lot, a lot of fun doing it. Picking out backgrounds, and picking out the cat, putting in the text. And they had to go through, and one of the problems they found is, they didn't leave the text up long enough, cause we, when we first went to review it, the text would change really fast. So, they did some problem solving and stuff like that. You don't have to go through the whole video, it's okay. So, so this is Girls Who Code. We had 24 members, or 24 girls who participated in different forms in the club this year. We never had one day where they were all there, but we wanted it that way, cause we could focus more time with the individual students. And they got to work and explore their stuff. That's it. Thank you very much for your time.
There's more that we're doing? But that's a smattering of STEAM initiatives that are happening at Sec Harbor Schools.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions for, from the board on STEAM?
Yes, first of all, this is incredibly impressive, and I think back 10 years ago even, of the changes that have happened in 10 years, and it's really outstanding. So, thank you all for being a part of that great change. The one question I had, and this might be more for the superintendent, is, you know, with other subject lines, you have a curriculum that spirals up, right, as time goes on. And we've seen amazing things at different levels. I was just curious what the overall strategy, is there an overall strategy that spirals up, or a curriculum that we're kind of following, and these are kind of programs that feed into that?
So, the library curriculum, which Heidi Wilson's been really great about implementing, is the one area that has that opening. So, the elementary, kindergarten through, through fifth grade has room for us to implement, because it's no longer library, it's library media science. So, we also have, we also have Jonathan that has the children that are scheduled throughout the day as well, Jonathan Schwartz, that does exposure to the children as well with technology. And then Heidi is doing STEAM to balance that out. So, the children are getting a double dose, starting from kindergarten all the way to fifth grade. And then, they scaffold right into the sixth grade with Mr. Rainey, as you saw. He's got it built in throughout his program. All these guys really, when they went through their interviews, they're like, okay, I do know STEAM. So, I was so happy when he went through the interview process about his passion in the sixth grade for STEAM. And then they scaffold right into Ed Maloney in the seventh and eighth grade. So, that's our scaffolding up program. And we're hoping by that time, it's really about, like, if a child likes music, they're exposed to music. If a child is gonna like coding, they're exposed to coding. And right now, what we're doing in the high school, and actually K through 12, is clubs, is clubs and clubs and clubs. So, the children can get that, get more of it by joining clubs after school. And we have a, like I said, we have robotics at the elementary, the middle school, and the high school. And then we have, in the high school, the Girls Who Code, and we have the engineering, we have all of the other clubs that are trying to Velcro kids to, who want to go find more of it. But right now, what we have developed is a spiraling up in complexity all the way up through.
Right. The, just one follow-up question, cause that was really helpful, thank you. And I don't sense that there's like a curriculum that exists similar to those other topics. It's more kind of like a skill development and finding where the passions are. But the other question I have, is I understand that a lot of it is club-based. We know that about 72% of our high schoolers do after-school sports, many of them two or three seasons. Oh, is there a strategy to add to our electives? Are we, is there a strategy to add to our electives? I know we have a couple of coding classes, but electives so that if kids are busy after school with those other things, whether it be the play or sports, that they still can be exposed to this? Because it seems like it's so compelling, based even, the research you shared just really made it even that much more compelling, so.
We have two courses right now in the middle school, high school that have been added over the last five years. One's AP, the computer science, and the other one is ID, the computer science as well. And we'll be looking at all that additions, but we have to balance that within the context of the available staff that we have right now. So those courses, if we're gonna add, it's gonna need staff.
And I was thinking more of electives than, like those, those are great courses, but that's 11th or 12th grade. I'm just wondering if there's any elective, because even in 10th grade, you can pick electives, if we could start having things during the day. I was just.
Did you have a question, Jenner?
Just in jux, a question to what you said about, you know, whether or not this is a specific curriculum. I think the, the point of it, in a way, is almost the fact that it's integrative and it's supposed to bring in every aspect of the child's thought process. And Mr. Klein, when you had gone back and said, you know, the first thing you do is you have to stop and draw things and you have to do the design process first. So we're going through the problem solving before it happens and hoping that it becomes integrated into the, every aspect of life, not just that one that you're being assigned at, at that point. And I think it's also really helpful when they're writing with their hand. It forces them to slow down and really think. And, yeah, I don't, I don't feel it needs to be like a specific curriculum. It's just a different way of thinking and presenting theoretical ideas that is just gonna change the shape of the mind.
And we know we have, we have, they have time. So through the library science program and through the computer programming that Mr. Schwartz does, and then through the clubs and organizations that are providing this exposure, just like we introduce foreign language or language other than English and just like we expose children to musical instruments and to math and to science, because the exposure will let us know if that's, if that's something they want to pursue. What frightens me is school districts that don't have the resources or aren't, or haven't, you know, done that exposure because we find out that they go, like that your son's a rock star because he's a big robotics guy and he presented at morning program, you know? That's when you find out that's something they wanted, that they might not have ever found out that coding, they had the brain wiring, that research was something they wanted to continue to do. So that's exciting.
Any other questions from the board? Alright, so at this time, thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Thank you so much, everyone. Thank you.
So, one of the other things on our agenda tonight is just to kind of talk about the special education. I think that there, I think the board could use some information about what our role is as well as the community and how it's different from ID or different from, you know, choosing, choosing a science curriculum or a math curriculum. And so, looking forward to it. Walk us through that. Thank you so much.
Sure.
So I think I'm gonna start first with what I can't talk about and what I can talk about tonight, because it's, this is always a really challenging spot for, I used to be a PPS director back in the day. Actually, I was assistant superintendent at a school district and we had PPS directors that would come and go and my superintendent would turn to me and say, "You're gonna be PPS director again, Katie?" I was like, "But I think I'm assistant superintendent." And he's like, "But you're so good at it." So, but I was not a special education teacher, but learned an awful lot over a couple of years of taking the head role of the CSE chair. So I learned, and I also worked for six years at a center that was predominantly special education students. And what you found out was that in public, you could not talk about specific programs, special education programs, and you couldn't talk about specific children. And that came, became very hard because when you spend so much time working on those programs and working with those children and working with those families, that not being able to talk to the press and talk to, in public about that was, was, it was kind of heartbreaking. So what I've done is for the edification of the board and for, a bit for our community because we can hang this on our website, I'm gonna talk, I'm gonna take us through a 30,000-foot view, but I'm also gonna end up with how we develop those programs. And what I can talk about is our, the people that we have employed in our special education programs, the services that they render. So the board can ask me about those general questions. I just can't talk about our children or the children that are in our programs because there's so few children in those programs that I would then be, be giving up their confidentiality. So for example, when I used to go out and present our school data, when a population got less than 20, I couldn't talk about that group of students because you could figure out who they were. And many people would say, "I don't mind. Katie, you can go ahead and talk about my children. I, I don't, you could give me that, okay, but I can't take that, okay? Because I'm defined by the laws of New York State and by the laws of US laws that constrict me from that." So I'm, I'm, I still can't do that. So let me take you through. So first of all, on the presentation that I have tonight, I've provided some of the acronyms that we just, we can't help ourselves. We're a little bit like the medical community. We use a lot of acronyms and they can be very daunting. So I provided those at the start of this presentation just so that you, if I, if I slip and I use them, I, I beg your forgiveness. But very simply, the simplest way you can, you can define a child with a disability is a two-part measurement. And that is a child with an intellectual disability of hearing impairment, speech, language, visual impairment, serious emotional disturbance, orthopedic impairment, autism, traumatic, brain injury, other health impairments such as ADD and learning disability. But then it becomes a two-part. And by reason of this disability, special needs, education, and related services are needed. So we'll talk a lot about FAPE or Free Appropriate Public Education. You can't deny a child, even if the parents want you to say, "We don't mind that the child isn't in free public education, we are by law required to provide the child." So I've had parents say, "Never mind. I don't want them to have these services." And we've said, if we've determined, the Committee on Special Education, that your child needs these services, we have to provide a free, public, appropriate public education, special education and related services. And that includes, they're provided an individual education plan. We can't blanket say, you know, "We're looking at this group of children and we're thinking, we're gonna build this program and they're gonna fit in that program." That's all. That's the program, you're just gonna have to take it or leave it. We built it a couple of years ago and it's working for us. We can figure it out. We cannot do that. Every year, every child will have their own individual education plan. And then we build the programs to match those individual education plans. We don't pull in a cookie cutter and make the children fit in. That's wrong. You don't do that. So you designed, they're designed uniquely to fit a child's disability and they have to meet state standards and they have to provide it at the public's expense. The other big caveat is least restrictive environment. Because back in my day, when I first started, back in 1988, we just sent them, we put them on a bus and we sent them down the road. And then a few years after I started teaching, they said, "We're bringing them back. They're all coming back." And I was a home economics teacher and suddenly I have children with lower IQs that were away at centers and they're like, "They're now coming back to classrooms." And I said, "That's fine, I'll take them." So I had children in my classrooms that, that were not reading and that by the end of two years were reading at grade level because they were with their peers and they were doing a great job. But they had been, where the thought process back in the day, 30 years ago, was, "Well, you know, they're mentally retarded. Keep them with their mentally retarded friends. They're do better." And least restrictive environment came in, and I'll give you the law that did that, that said, "No, to the maximum extent appropriate, children with disabilities should be educated with children who are not disabled." That's all. It was a law. And the placement in special education classrooms or removal from regular education settings occur only, only when the disability is so severe that satisfactory education cannot be achieved in regular education classes with the use of supplementary supports. So you can't be taking the child out. They have to be with heterogeneous children. Or, and that's least restrictive environment. Special education settings must be as close as possible to the local school. That's the law. And then there's IEI, early intervention. It's run through the Department of Health, the public health laws. So when parents are so worried here on the East End, and I feel it, they're saying, "Oh my gosh, these children are being diagnosed even prior to three years old with autism. Katie, oh my gosh." That is through the Department of Health, it doesn't even touch the school districts yet. Does it make it a need? Yes. Do we have to work cooperatively? Yes. That focuses on helping the family as a whole from zero to three. It's for eligible children that have to show significant delays in one, in one area, like I think it's 33%, or in two areas, like 25%, 25% in cognitive, adaptive, communication, physical. And those are usually picked up by your pediatrician or if you're a mom with, mom and dad with multiple children, you're gonna say, "Wow, we're not hitting, we're not hitting our cognitive ability." And then there's a family, individual family service plan for early intervention only. And that's only again for zero to three years, that's based on the child's developmental needs for the family, not school needs. Everything's just on supporting the family at this point. Now again, that's all done through the Department of Health and Public Works. That is not anything to do with the school district yet. Should the school districts be helping? Yes. Because I'll go back to our speaker prior, who was dead-on, especially with, with our autistic spectrum children, early intervention, ABA therapies, working as a team, occupational therapists, speech therapists, physical therapists, working on the ABAs, which is, ABA is Applied Behavioral Analysis, is giving children the life skills that they need to understand and start gaining. Those all happen at those very, very young ages. So then there's a CPSC, that's the, that's a Committee on Preschool Education. That is funded through the county. Very often people think that is happening here at the school and the school's responsible for it because we host the CPSC meetings. They determine whether a child's eligible for services from three to five. They focus on the whole child and family-centered, but again, now we're, now we're gearing up ready for school. How from three to five can we get a child ready for school and make sure that they're gonna be successful in school? So we're better to host those CPSC meetings, or the Committee on Special Education preschool, than at the school building with the PPS director. But all the PPS director can do is make recommendations to the county. Families, this can feel very laborious. This can feel like, "What? You are not feeling my urgency? Are you kidding me? Why is this moving so slowly?" Because we aren't doing the providing. We aren't doing the payments, we're just facilitating the meeting. Actually, there should be a county representative there, but very often, because we're such a gigantic county and we're so spread out and we have so many school districts, that we would never be able to host these meetings at all if we didn't take initiative. And it almost appears like we're in charge. We're not. We're just making recommendations. But again, should some of these services start getting coordinated so more of these early intervention services are happening? Yes. But I have some very good news tonight because, as a matter of fact, I've spoken to parents about how important it is to have these early intervention services coordinated. And Suffolk County has started the process with our PPS director for Sag Harbor Schools to start providing these services directly with our own speech therapist, physical therapist, occupational therapist, right here, so that when Stellamaris opens, we can be providing those programs to these three, these, these three and four and up to five-year-olds right here with our own personnel so that we can start coordinating this for some of the other districts. It's a huge mountain of paperwork that Barbara is taking on, but it's because we're hearing the cry that's out there. And we know that it's significant and we're, we're getting the support of the county. We were a little concerned about jumping ahead on that because it is the county that pays for this, it's the county who makes the recommendations due, but if they can let us be the provider and we have the personnel, it could make a huge difference in parents' lives. One of the other things is, is that the county's really only providing these services on the school calendar year unless you can prove the child is going to fall back during the summer or has significant needs. Versus from birth to two, up to the age of three, those services were provided year-round. So now we're falling into the school calendar year and you have to start advocating that they need those needs. Okay, the Committee on Special Education is from five to 21. Now it's in our ball, ballpark. The CPSC would have our CSC, our PPS director as the chair, school psychologist, somebody who did the assessments, the parents. You should have a county representative, your preschool teacher, or whoever is providing that, and then any related service providers. And this is where I get worried that I'm leaving the board behind when I say service providers because I live and breathe this every day. Service providers are therapists such as speech therapists, physical therapists, occupational therapists. There's a litany, you know, there's, we've had musical therapists, there's, there, those like the eight, people that deliver the ABA therapy. Those are all some of the CPS. It matches the same on the other side, except for we no longer have the county representative, but we will have the school psychologists, the parents. The students sometimes, as they get older, will be part of their CSE process. Special education teacher, regular education teacher, usually you'll have one or two of them's weighing in. And then again, the related service providers, occupational therapists, speech therapists, physical therapists. So your IEP or your individual education plan, they, that is your written legal document. It's gonna have and it's done every year and it's unique every single year because a child's gonna make progress. And it is by law, the law, there are a lot of slides that explain IEPs because IEPs are done annually and they're on what kind of progress does that child make? So a child might move out of a self-contained classroom and into an integrated co-teaching model classroom so that they, that's why we can't say we have a program from year to year. We can't say that this is, this is how we're gonna staff something from year to year because we have to take a look at that. So it has, if you have a good IEP teacher, the teacher from next year or the group from next year that's working with that child should be able to know where's that child's strengths, where are those child's challenges, and what do we gotta get busy around right now? They should be able to look at that and know. So here's a few of the laws. There's Section 504, IDEA, No Child Left Behind, American With Disabilities Act, New York State Part 200 regulations. These are very, very stern laws. We went from, I think with, you know, what Chris Teis was saying about how far we've come with STEAM, how far we've come with people with disabilities, we've come an awfully long way. And it's not just ramps and elevators. It is really taking care of every, you know, when they used to say, "Oh, the good old days, you know, in education when you blah, blah, blah." Well, now we educate every single child. So 30 or 40 years ago, we didn't educate every single child. They literally just left them home or they put them in an institution. You know, my brother and I have, my oldest, one of my oldest brothers and I have an awful hard time together because he worked in a home with autistic adults and he worked with board members that took very good care of those autistic adults. And I said, "You know what? Times have changed. We now invest so much in them when they're little so that they are active participants in our community." And he was so strongly believed in the work that they did in housing and caring for these autistic adults. And I said, "There's a different roadmap now." So what is a disability? There are 14 distinct primary terms that are included in the IDEA under There are 14 distinct primary terms that are included in the IDA under definitions. Now, these are federal terms. That if you fall under these federal terms, you have a disability, nobody can fight with you, and you are protected under federal law. So in order to meet the definitions, or the eligibility for special education, a child with a disability performance, they have to be also adversely affected due to this disability. Adversely affected, adversely affects educational performance appears in most of the disability definitions. This does not mean, however, the child has to be failing in school to receive educational and related supports. Back in the day, the child had to be failing before we jumped in. This law changes that. They said, "No, no, no, no." It has to adversely affect their educational performance, but they don't have to prove to you they're failing first. They just have to fall under this. And according to this, this law states that they make a free, appropriate public education available to any child with a disability who needs special education-related services, even if the child has not failed or been retained in a course grade or advancing from grade to grade. So you can have a child that's gifted. And if they have one of these disabilities, they can, they can receive services. So here is the ones, as a matter of fact, we had a parent who lives here in the district that because of her work up at New York State, dyslexia was added to New York State. And that was one of our parents that did that work to add dyslexia. And I think that's very interesting. So that is the list for New York State Regulations Part 200 for, but the number one you'll most commonly see is learning, is learning disability. And the lion's share is going to be children that struggle in reading. And that's where the dyslexia falls under. Or dyscalculia, where children struggle with math, or they struggle. So that, I'm gonna show you a chart in a little bit. And we have roughly 13% of our children identified out of our 980 students. So it's a, that's, that percentage, of that percent, most of those are going to be learning disabled or dyscalculia or dyslexia. And that's where we do the, we get to them as early as possible. So this is the, this is the chart where I'd say, most of our children fall into this, where we give them early supports. We do what they call response to intervention. We get in there early. We say, "Holy cow, somebody's struggling a little bit." We don't identify them as special education. We just provide universal and preventative interventions. Then there's our 5 to 10% that have the dyscalculia, the dyslexia, the learning disabilities. We identify them. And that's our, that's probably our 10%. And they need more intense interventions. They may need special education teachers, occupational therapists, physical therapists, more rapid responses. And then we have 1 to 5% that need extremely intense interventions. And this becomes our children with Down Syndrome, our children with autism, that they have to have very intense work and the earliest possible. Because yes, if you don't do it early, those children are gonna be your million dollar children later on. They're gonna be where my brother was, where they were 40, 50 years old and living in treatment houses because they needed that kind of help. So the earlier you can get to that intervention, it really should be starting at three and four and five years old, prior to them ever coming into kindergarten. So here's the CSC process. You get a referral. As I lovingly say, you're sitting in your mom, and you're sitting in your bed late at night, and it's keeping you up. That becomes you call the teacher. Your teacher's sitting there grading your papers at night, and the student keeps showing up. That's the referral process. So referrals can come all kinds of ways. But they're referred, they're evaluated. And that can be through your school psychologist, through your occupational therapist, physical therapist, speech therapist. There's a lot, there's a litany of evaluations. Your primary physician can be involved. And then at the meeting, lots of work goes on in those steps one and two. I'll make it very simple. There's the eligibility, the IEP development. Then there's the implementation, and then there's the annual review and reevaluation. I've simplified that process a lot. A lot of work goes into that. So here's all the sections of the IEP. So placement, levels of performance, post-secondary goals, transition. Transition is when we're getting them ready for college, or where they're gonna go after. Reporting progress to parents, annual goals, benchmarks, program service modifications, 12-month services, testing combinations, coordination of transition activities, participation in state assessments, do they need extended time? Special transportation. Some of our children, you know, need maintenance on the bus, that kind of thing. And placement. Spend a lot of time on IEP because again, it's a legal document. It provides your accountability tool. Here's what we said we were gonna do this year. Did we do it? It identifies how students will be prepared for adult living. It identifies how the resources school will configure. It supports the participation in general education. It guides the provision for instruction and ensures strategic coordination of students' needs. The purpose of an individual plan, it's the foundation, it's your blueprint. It's what you're gonna be working with. It's a tool for measuring success of the program and for monitoring accountability. Did we really do what we said we were gonna do? We sat at that meeting. We all came together. It clarifies the resources that we committed to that child. It provides consistency. It's a communication tool for parents and teachers to understand the unique needs of that child. And it allows mutual decision-making. The school works first, these are just a few clarifications to provide interventions for academic and social areas, for general education, way before we get to the referral process. Unless again, it's that high percentage. So, and that we address special education. IDA entitles all students to align for individual needs in the least restrictive environment. We, special education is a service. It's not a place. So it isn't BOS's. It isn't a self-contained classroom. It's a service that we put together as we do all of the, we find out what every child's IEP is. We can never, ever, we often have people go in, but I have to have that teacher. We can never promise a teacher. And State Ed is very clear on that. Even if we wanted to, even if we knew we could, we can never promise a teacher, or a person, or a TA, because we can only provide, we can only say on the IEP what program they're gonna have, what service they're gonna have. Because people can come and go. And so that's long been made very clear to us, that no school district can, can offer a specific person. And provide a broad range of services and supports. And how can parents build a more cooperative relationship, you know, with parents? And, you know, this one, it's so hard, because parents come to the table and, and they're really scared. And sometimes school districts, we make mistakes when we're working with parents. And sometimes they don't, we sometimes can't always communicate everything that's happening. But if you can always realize that we've got a relationship that's gonna go until the child's 21, if we can advocate together, that's so important. Because we do have all these laws in place. If we can advocate together, it makes such a huge difference when we have to ask Suffolk County to help us, to come to our, to come to the table, like Barbara has been working on. That makes such a huge difference. So that was a fast run-through. Questions?
Yeah, if you wanna have questions, go ahead.
Yes. This is, I've been trying to wrap my brain around this, as you know, because this is a new concept for me. And Mr. Barrowcliffe, I also wanna thank you for the research you've provided for us. And I guess one of my questions, unfortunately, this is, the lawyer in me now is coming out. And it's the Supreme Court's decision in March of 2017, in the Andrews. My understanding of that decision is that it actually enhances the individuality of the plan, which almost kind of ties the board back a little bit more.
Yeah.
Because it's really about the specifics.
Yeah.
So you can't say, "Well, we have this plan in place and this plan is in place."
You know, I'm missing a slide.
Because the Andrews case was 2017, so it trumps the 2016. And it updates it, right?
Right.
Well, and that was the understanding that we had from my attorney. And as some of you are aware, I'm going through my administrative certification, and one of the classes that I just took was school law. And so don't think I didn't pull my professor's side, say, "Okay, what's the, so what, what can the board do and what can't the board do?" And basically, our role is to provide the, the funding, to provide the professional development, to provide, to hire the right people. But as far as the IEP, which is individualized program, we're not part of those CSC meetings. We don't have any say in that. And so if, if the, the parents feel like, well, the IEP that has been, that has been written for my child, I don't like it, the most the board can do is put together a different committee to look at it. Other than that, the board can't
Right.
alter that document at all.
And one of my slides that's not, that's missing from here, and I don't know how I lost it along the way, because Scott has, it took away off my power stick, so, is the Committee on Special Education, how that process works, they hold annual meetings on SPED students. Then the area school, step two is the area school districts let us know who they're sending us. Step three is the students are grouped by common needs in their students, in the students' least restrictive environment. Then models and programs are developed annually to meet individual student IEP needs. So here's the four models. Integrated co-teaching, or also called inclusion, self-contained classrooms, resource room, or consultant models. Then special education programming is implemented for that school year and then reevaluated annually. So that doesn't reach board level. So it, because it's confidential, and it's individual for each child. So a child may, like, let's say we have a self-contained classroom. A child may move away. A child may age, may develop out of that program and go into a co-teaching model. A school district may not send a child to that program. So that, that, that program may not be there. But what the school, what the school board does do is it expects us to develop the very best programming. And you make that clear every single day. And we're in the process of hiring, because Barbara's very sadly gonna be leaving us. And you make it absolutely clear, we hire only the best. So your standards of programming are very clear. For, you saw what we do in STEAM, and that was my first year here, was you build the best STEAM programs. And we have worked so hard to build the best STEAM programs. And we're working very hard. But a lot of that, all, all you see is X's and O's when you adopt programming for CPS, you know, preschool. It's, all you see is, is just X's and O's, because we have to maintain the confidentiality, because there's such small numbers. There's such small numbers.
Just a point of clarity in what you meant. I have other questions, but I'll wait till other people go. But what, as a board, what we can do is direct the superintendent to say, "We wanna bring more services in-house versus not," correct?
Yes.
So we could decide that as a board, not what the specific services are, or not how they're implemented, that's regulated. But we do have a role in helping to shape how much is in-house versus how much is outsourced.
And actually, before we, what, three years ago, we, we were able to talk before the program started. I couldn't, we can't talk about the program now, because I have children in the program. But before the program started, we could talk about it all the time, because I wasn't talking about individual students. And I, you know, so we could talk about creating a program that would service children with, with autism. And we could talk about servicing children that were high needs, until the moment we developed the program. Then we had to go radio silence, because now we have children in that program, and we can't talk about that program anymore. Because we would be talking about those children.
So I just wanna clarify, on top of what Chris just said, we can take, how do you instruct on whether or not to bring the programs, and which programs to bring in-house or whatever?
Well, not specifically. There may be programs where it may not be legal to bring it in-house, because we don't have the right facilities, whatever. But I just said that we do play a role in that.
Right.
So the Board of Education can tell me to go west? So Katie, the direction the board, the, we wanna go in is have the very best, if we can build the very best programming in-house. And actually, the law is pretty clear about that. If you read the IDA law, it says least restrictive, and it has to be close to home.
But then, what happens if next year, we have that program in place, but there's no kids that that program would benefit?
Then we don't have a program.
Right. Okay. So clearly, it's the individuality trumps the common plan.
Exactly. Exactly. And those are, those are developed every year on an individual basis. And it's a, it's a handful of children.
Other questions about special ed programming?
I have a thank you to this presentation. It was very helpful, because I think, I agree with Katie, right? This is all very new to me. So I think it was very helpful to get through this base. And I completely understand now in terms of IEP and not being able to discuss that. I totally get that. But I guess the one question I still have is when I hear people in the community say, "Well, are you providing for kids with autism?" In other words, not speaking specifically, like, you know, how do we then continue to have a role making sure that it is the very best? And how can we talk about that from a programmatic standpoint? In other words, is there a way to take the program piece and separate it from the IEP, so that we can do our jobs?
So the, the board did have an outside agency audit the program. And, you know, they could have a separate agency audit the program again. So you were, you were provided with that, with that audit of what they, you know, they went in and they looked at the program. They looked at, they looked at the data, because in the programs, we collect tremendous amounts of data to see, because the progress is very different for special needs children. So you have to collect data. So they looked at the data. So that's, that's one tool.
I think another point of clarification, a question that came to me was from a community member that said, "Well, how come you can talk about programming for regular ed kids and you can't talk about programming for special ed kids? Like, why is it that you can talk about STEM, STEAM, and IB, and all these other things, and you can't talk about special ed?" And I think the difference kinda goes to what you were saying, is those are broad programs that meet the needs of lots of kids. It's not an individual program for one child, which the minute it's an IEP, it's an individualized program, is what the IEP stands for. So the minute, the minute you write that, develop that program for that kid, that's, that's not our role. Our, simply because there's, again, she listed all the different laws and regulations around special ed. It simply don't exist around general ed. I mean, it is, it is board level to pick textbooks if we wanted to, but we can't, we can't alter the individualized program.
Right. It just feels like there needs to be a separation somehow, so we can talk in general terms about whether we're providing for a category of students. So let's just take autism as an example, right?
But you can't even do that.
You can't, because the autism spectrum is so broad, and every single kid is so different.
Not with the IEP. Okay, all right. So you're saying that it's too integrated and you can't. But I understand why people are confused.
Frustrated, too.
I feel frustrated. As a board member, I feel frustrated.
But as an example, for instance, because this was raised during the budgeting discussion in the past month or so, maybe six weeks ago, about dyslexia, let's say. There was a discussion about a program we were bringing in
Yeah.
to address that. So there are parts where we actually have spoken about programs publicly to address categories here. So I think that blanket statement's a little bit, I would caution us, because that's not actually how we're operating.
So you can talk about service providers and what services they provide. You can have, you can, you can learn about occupational therapy, physical therapy, speech therapy, you know, any litany of all of the things that they provide. We just can't talk about the child.
I think also, I think I just wanna clarify, Chris, how you mentioned dyslexia. So to me, by saying dyslexia is, dyslexia and autism are comparative. It's like apples and oranges. Like dyslexia is a, I, I, my wording's all wrong, but that's more of like a really disability. Whereas autism could be a million different things all in one, including dyslexia.
I was using it as an example, because it was on the list classified as definitions of disability categories. And, and that was one of them. Another is deafness. Another is blind. You know, there's a whole bunch.
Hearing impairments.
There, so there are many. There, so there are many categories here where you could have that kind of conversation publicly. It's different than an individual IEP for someone who's autistic. So, I was just making a clarification because saying that we can't talk about this is untrue because we have. We can't just talk about some and we can talk about others.
Katie, would you mind explaining what ABA therapy is? Because that's something that's been brought up multiple times.
Sure, sure. So, applied behavioral analysis is where you and I learn through a social sense. So, we have, we have sort of six sense. We learn through, um, I'm going to mimic what my friends are doing. And I'm going to learn the, the behaviors just by, by mimicking what everybody else is doing. Um, children with autism are, are missing that sixth sense, that social sense. And everything has to be broken down into very small, um, discrete items that they have to learn so that they can generalize them. They aren't going to generalize behaviors until those behaviors have been broken down into little tiny segments. Um, and so, there's BCBAs who are the, kind of the, the, the most professional folks that knows, that know the most about it. And then, they can sort of train paraprofessionals to also be kind of singing off the same page of the hymn book on ABA so that everybody's doing ABA. Um, but we have bring consultants in. We have two and about to be three ABAs in our school district, one's about to get their certification. So, we have three here at the, at the school district. But then, we have consultants that come in that then work with our special education teacher doing ABA. And so, ABA is that if I want a child to learn how to wash their hands appropriately, I've got to break that into small manageable parts about how we wash our hands appropriately. And then, I've got to reinforce that so that they're encouraged to do that. Because the verbal cues may not mean anything to them. So, I have to find things that resonate for that child with autism that, that are meaningful for them and that encourage them to then follow the procedures for washing their hands. And follow the procedures for, you know, getting ready and build a task or project. And that, and when they learn this, this series of tasks, then they can generalize that task. So, then they can accomplish washing their hands on their own. And then, that's generalized. And then, we move on to other tasks. And the entire day can really be full of ABA. But we're going to spend at least two hours during the whole day and probably two hours at home because all the related tasks at home also require ABA. So, we will send somebody into the home as well to provide those kind of services.
Thank you.
Barbara, did I do okay with that? Okay. Just wanted to check.
Any other questions from the board about special ed?
I, I had, I had some, and this is so chock full of great information. And I know because you did all that great stuff early, you went through this fast, but I have a, a handful. And I, I don't think in, in my time on, eight years in the board, we've never covered a lot of this. So, this was very helpful and I want to thank you. And it took, I'm sure it took a lot of time to put this together. One is, um, you mentioned, I think, eleven percent are, is that eleven percent of our?
Thirteen percent.
A thirteen percent of our student population, is that an IEP?
They have IEPs.
Okay, so thirteen percent.
And then, we also have 504s, which are a little different. Um, 504s, so then you might have ADHD, or you might have, like, asthma or a broken leg.
Okay, so, uh, one question, because this comes up, and I've heard this from parents, too. How are teachers informed and educated on the individual IEPs of the students in their classroom? Because most kids with IEPs are actually mainstreamed in a classroom, and I think that's a, a point that's come up a lot.
Well, there, there's typically, you know, an integrated set.
Right.
Most of the students have a special ed teacher as well, also has a case manager. It, it starts to change in the, not so much in the middle school, but in the high school. Um, not every single class of a child is, is an integrated co-teaching class. So, they get the IEP that they're expected to read. And there's a case manager for each student, which, um, that particular person will meet with the teachers to explain some of their accommodations or some of the modifications that have to be made. Sometimes, we have consultant teachers that work directly with the teacher, not directly with the students, so that the teachers can support them better in their classrooms. So, there's all different models. But, um, all of the teachers, when they open up their attendance, there's like a little dot, and they're able to press on that dot and the IEP opens up.
So, and that includes if they have ADD or ADHD?
It has, yes. It has their disability, all of their goals, and all the modifications that are extended.
Excellent, thank you. Um, a couple of slides, it said ages up to twenty-one.
Mm-hmm.
So, as a school district, what is our responsibility to provide those services even if somebody has graduated and they're under twenty-one? Is it just till they're in, they're, they're in the school district?
Till they graduate.
Till they graduate.
Okay.
So, some children, um, the, the, the parents and the children can make the decision that they're going to postpone their graduation until they're twenty-one because they can benefit so much from, like, work placement um, so that they can be out developing a lot more skills prior to graduation. So, they'll stay with the district right through twenty-one.
And then, they also get the, the services provided by the district.
Yes, right.
Which isn't getting out in charge to secure it? Okay.
And those children, and all the children get transition plans for when they're leaving, too.
Okay, and then I had, just one more question, which is, the slide on the process where it goes like referral evaluation eligibility. What is the district's responsibility for parents says, you know, I see this at home and I want my child evaluated? Because I, I hear from parents, sometimes they have to pay externally to have an evaluation done. Um, and so, I just wanted to know how we handle that.
No, um, a teacher can make a referral, a parent can make a referral. And what we'll often do is try and supply some building level services to see if we can resolve some of this with interventions prior to the special education process. And that, um, some, some parents are comfortable going through the process and some people say, no, I want my child evaluated for special educational services. Our school psychologists, either Lori Lavinio or Christina Little, will then do an educational psychological evaluation. Um, if we feel that speech is necessary, then our speech therapist will provide an evaluation. And we have sixty days to do all of that and then create a meeting with the parents, all the, um, service providers and the psychologists to go over the evaluation. If parents, um, don't agree with it, they are allowed to ask us for an outside evaluation at the district's expense. And, um, some parents just go out and get evaluations.
Mm-hmm.
And decide to share it or decide not to. But we will always evaluate a child if a parent makes that request in writing.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, thank you very much, appreciate that. So, uh, the last bit on the agenda is Board Docs.
Everybody who comes bearing donuts gets a big vote of confidence.
Did you write our Roman's clause?
Enjoy. Oh, my mother always trained me, never go to nobody's house and behave.
I, I agree.
I'm sorry about the donuts, I wanted another dessert.
Plus, I got a free nut, so I'm gonna eat this donut.
And, I know, I gotta hear my name. So, my name is James Pace, and I'm the Director of Information Technology and Project Planning for the New York State School Boards Association. So, I think we're here to talk a little bit about Board Docs, so paperless board meetings. But before I begin, feel free to enjoy those donuts. And what happened is I was talking to some of my colleagues last Friday and they said, you're going to Sag Harbor? And I said, yeah. So, they said, Sag Harbor, New York, you know, we're in Albany. So, I said, yeah, yeah, I know it's a trip. Now, I'm sure Scott can attest, I'm in IT, so very rarely do they let us out the office. So, this meeting was in Fargo, North Dakota, I was going to be here, so. So, thank you very much for the invitation.
Wait, are we letting you stay over, I hope?
Uh, yeah, I gotta find someplace out. I didn't realize, so I will find someplace to stay between here and Albany.
I did send you an email with a few guys.
All right, thank you very much. I guess also, I was probably brought here to affirm, I saw a lot of stuff y'all was talking about with the coding, and I'm a true testament of that because even though I reside in Albany, but I'm originally from New York City, Brooklyn, New York, from one of those not-so-nice projects. And coding gave me the direction and the inspiration to follow my studies. And that's how I got to it because I went to SUNY Albany and studied computer science. So, I applaud what y'all doing and keep supporting your coding technologies, so.
Thank you.
Now, let's talk a little bit about Board Docs. First, I'll start out how we got there. We've been paperless for about fifteen years. And how ours started, like, like what y'all are trying to do, we started looking at paperless solutions. And back then, we went out and looked at different companies. A lot of these companies, when they first went paperless, they had these, what they call on-premise solutions. So, they had the server, you had to deal with patching and security and things of that nature. So, me being a developer, the next thing I said is, hey, we can build this ourselves. So, we built our own system about fifteen years ago. And it worked. It worked well for the most part, but that's not our core competency. We're the New York State School Boards Association, so our core competency is helping school districts achieve student achievement. So, when we tried to re-up our infrastructure, what we decided to do is look at other products that were out there and form a few between Board Docs roles to the top. So, we started partnering with them in about twenty-eleven. And we partnered with them to bring Board Docs into New York State at a much reasonable rate. And since then, we have over two hundred and sixty school districts utilizing Board Docs. I think over forty in Long Island are currently utilizing Board Docs. We partner with your, your BOSEs, Eastern Suffolk BOSEs. Sorry if I didn't have enough for all, everybody, I didn't expect this big, this many people here. And we also partner with everyone BOSEs, and I think they do your policy. And what happens is what they're also doing now is they're moving everybody over to Board Docs so you have one integrated solutions if you decide to go there. So, I'm going to turn it over to, I think we have Jacob from Board Docs on the line. You there, Jacob?
Hey, James, I'm here.
Okay, all right, there you go. And just real quickly, why paperless? And from a technology standpoint, whenever I try to put forth initiative, it has to do one of three things. One, it has to save money. Or two, it has to enhance efficiencies. Or three, it has to provide a better user experience. And I'm here to tell you, very few times in IT do we have the trifecta. But if you do paperless right, it will be the trifecta. It will save money, it will enhance efficiencies, and it will provide for a greater user experience. And also, from your perspective, it will provide greater transparency to your constituents. And Jacob, I will turn it over to you and I will be here to answer any questions.
Okay, great. Um, thanks, James. So, um, I guess where I'll start is, why do folks look at Board Docs in the first place, right? What are they doing before they, uh, before they come to Board Docs? Well, usually, it's a, it's a combination of things, right? They're going to be using paper, or PDF, or Dropbox, or Google, basically. Um, some, some kind of quasi-paperless systems, right? So, the challenge there becomes a fact that you have a lot of different silos of information, right? It's not easy to access from a public standpoint. It's not easy to make necessarily data-driven decisions as a board member or even as an administrator. So, that's kind of where Board Docs comes into play. Uh, one of the big differentiators, one of our big advantages that I'm going to show you with our platform is our comprehensive search capability. Um, so, I will go ahead, and then my plan is really, I'm just going to go ahead and show you guys examples of districts in your area that are using Board Docs. We'll talk a little bit about, uh, a little bit about the initiatives that we're helping to meet. And then, we'll talk a little bit about the backend and then we'll open it up to questions. So, I'm not going to go too in-depth on the backend, I'm going to keep it pretty high level. Um, and then, then we can have a Q and A session. So, can, can everyone hear me okay, by the way? Am I coming through clear?
Yeah.
Yes, Jacob, you're on a PowerPoint presentation, I'll just to let you know.
Am I coming through clear, James and then Scott and everyone?
Yeah, we can hear you, but you're, you're on a PowerPoint presentation. I didn't know if you wanted to be there or you wanted to be on the interface.
I, I can't really hear you guys, but I'm hoping that, I'm hoping that you guys can hear me.
Uh, Jacob, you're, you're on a PowerPoint presentation. You might just want to slide over to, I don't know, if that's where you wanted to be, or did you want to be on your web browser?
So, unfortunately, James, I still can't hear you guys, but, um, uh, it, it sounds like you might be able to, 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 to hear me coming through. Um, so, so that, so that sounds good, then. Um, real quick, I'm going to wrap up this, this PowerPoint here. Just wanted to give you guys one more quick point, uh, one more quick slide. Just on the ADA compliance front, just note that I'm about to show you, the Board Docs interface is going to be totally ADA compliant, WCAG two-point-oh double A, um, and, and, and AAA compliant. Um, so, we work directly with the Office of Civil Rights to ensure, uh, to ensure that we not only meet but exceed all the regulations that are currently in place from an ADA standpoint. Um, and one other point is just, uh, from a Board Doc service standpoint, from a support standpoint, um, we have onsite training and it's, uh, as part of our implementation process. So, we will have a team that comes to the district in person to train administrators as well as board members, make sure that, um, ma, make sure that they're comfortable navigating the system. And of course, for administrators, actually creating, managing, and publishing documents through our system. Because that's a big piece of this, right? That efficiency, that operational efficiency for the administrative team, as well as the ease of access for our board members, as well as the transparency, accountability, uh, for, for the public, too. So, I'll go ahead and show you guys some examples. So, what I'm bringing up here, and James might have mentioned, we have a pretty big, uh, pretty, pretty big presence in Suffolk County, as well as Nassau County. Um, but what we're seeing right here is East Dixwell, Twilltown, this school district. And I'll show you guys a couple more examples here, uh, of some districts that we're working with. But the idea, what you're actually looking at is our, is our featured page. Uh, as you see Southampton Public Schools. So, you would have a link to Board Docs on your district website. The end user, be that an administrator, a member of the public, or a board member, would simply click on that link and they would be brought to something that looks like this, right? It's really going to be a blank canvas, it's going to be totally configurable, but it's going to follow, uh, this, this kind of, uh, this kind of format for the most part. So, again, the only difference from an aesthetic viewpoint is going to be if you're an administrator uh, or a board member, you're going to be prompted to type in a username and password when you click that link on your district website. If you're a member of the public, you're not going to be prompted for any credentials. So, if you're a member of the public, uh, you're only going to be able to see what administration has, uh, has made available for consumption at this point. If you're a board member that's logged in with username and password, you're just going to have access to more information, right? You're going to have access to that executive session content, for instance. So, that's the only differentiation, um, as far as, as far as, um, as far as who sees what. So, let's talk about exactly what's going on here. So, the idea of Board Docs is your one-stop shop, right? So, on the backend for, for your administrative team, it's a lot easier to publish all of the information, right? That's part one. Now, what we're looking at is, is the consumption. So, how we actually, how we actually consume all of the info. So, along these tops, uh, along these tabs across the top here is where all of your information will reside. And I'm actually going to go ahead and switch over to a different district to show you guys about the, the meetings and policies and so forth. Um, primarily because what, what they look like is probably pretty similar to what your experience would be. So, I'm going to go ahead and switch over to this district here. And the reason I do that, as I take you into our meetings tab, is because they also, um, have a, have a built-in video component, which is something that you guys will probably want to take advantage of. So, again, the idea here, all of your meetings in one place, right? Buckethead by year, going back as far as you'd like. And then, we have a couple options when we designate a specific meeting. So, of course, we can view the agenda, we can view minutes, right? Which we're attaching to the specific meeting in this case. And of course, we can print that specific minutes document, and we can watch video. So, we have this video integration here as well, where an end user can watch video while they're following along with the digital agenda. Now, when we go ahead and actually view the agenda, we're going to see this, this type of, uh, this, this type of view here. We have our, we have our list, our meeting list on the left and our specific agenda item details on the right. This is going to be continuous throughout the system, right? It's going to be the same view no matter where you navigate. And it's going to be consistent across any device and any browser. So, tablet, Chromebook, whatever you're using, it's going to look exactly the same. As you can see, as I swipe across, right, I can have as much rich text built into the system as I want. I could have a comprehensive motion and voting audit summary right here at the bottom. And of course, I'm going to have those abilities that we mentioned, right, to print. We can print the current agenda item, we can print the detailed agenda. And we can also print a simple nondescriptive, simple agenda as well. Another big piece of this, as I alluded to at the very beginning, is search. So, the ability to have all of your information at your fingertips, right? It's all the most recent document, you never have to rely on anyone else. So, if I'm a board member, for instance, maybe I'm looking for my minutes, right? Maybe I'm looking for all of my approvals. I just type in that term into the specific meeting and up come my results. So, that's part one. It's going to be just that initial search within a specific individual meeting. We have several other levels of search, though I'll show you in a couple moments here. But for now, let's transition to the policy piece. So, on the policy side of things, we have a couple options for you. So, number one, you can house all of your policies within Board Docs. And the advantage is going to be that it's all going to be totally searchable, right? And it's going to be a very user-friendly interface. Again, that's the idea, right? As I transition to Southampton, and I click on their policies tab, and I'm looking, and I, and I can see how their- And I click on their policies tab, and I'm looking, and I, and I can see how they're housing their policies within Board Docs. So you can have as many books as you want. Within each book, you can have as many different sections as you want. And again, the idea is as much rich text built into the system. Can have links externally to legal codes, cross-reference within, within, uh, within Board Docs as well. Basically, everything that you would hope that you'd be able to do from a policy standpoint. And again, the advantage here is having that one-stop shop where everything is searchable, uh, i- in one searchable repository. Now, we also have the ability for people that, that are comfortable with what they're doing, with their, with their policy management already. Where we can just link externally, right? So for example, if I go to Riverhead, I can see that I just clicked their policy section, and I'm brought to this external source that they use. So both options are gonna be available to you. Most folks do choose to house their policies within Board Docs, because there's a lot of advantages, both on the backend, as far as managing the full lifecycle, um, and, and pushing out edits quickly, um, a- as, as well as, as well as the ease of use. The last piece of this is gonna be the library section. So the library section is going to be everything that's not your policies, everything that's not your agendas, everything that's not your minutes, right? So it might be your upcoming events. It might be your board number buyouts. It's basically all those other ancillary documents, all those, all of that ancillary information, uh, that's enough for change to meetings. So as I transition to this library section here, I'm gonna see that I have a, that I have a lot of different, uh, that I have a lot of different use cases, right? I can have my director's corner, my superintendent's report, um, so on and so forth, or accountability framework. One of the most common things that I see, and one of the biggest advantages of a library for districts I work with, is the strategic goals section. So within our library, we have a section for you to not only list, but track your goal progress. So what that means is every time, um, for example, with this performance-focused budgeting goal, accountability framework, key result indicator, every time an agenda item pertaining to this goal is brought before the board, it's listed in this type of format here, right? So I can see the comprehensive view of all the steps we've taken towards meeting our goals. And I can see what we need to do moving forward. And again, because it's a tied-together system, I have the ability to click on this agenda item from June twenty seventeen and navigate back, right? Because it's all tied together. And I have my motion and voting audit here, right? I have any supporting documents that I need. And it's gonna allow me to keep track of everything, right? Monitor my goals. What a lot of folks will do is they'll just have a fiscal accountability goal. And they'll link every single purchase, every single vendor, every contract that goes before the board. They'll be able to monitor it in this format. Maybe a facilities project, right? Uh, to, to monitor progress on that, and, and see all the steps that we've taken. So again, it's just the ability to track progress on not only strategic goals, but any project that the district is working on in a very transparent way. Finally, the last piece of this public-facing side is gonna be the search capability, the comprehensive search across all of your public-facing information. So I showed you search within one specific meeting, for instance. Now we're gonna search across all of our historic information. So as I go back to Southampton, let's say I wanna search for all of our information pertaining to, you know, all the contracts that we might have at the Southampton schools, right? I type in that, I type in that term, and up come all of my results, right? Historically, agenda items from twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen. And again, because it's a tied-together system, I have the ability to navigate back. To navigate, uh, to, to navigate back to this agenda item from twenty seventeen and get all the background information that I need. Right? So this is just one example. Maybe you wanna search for your new hire information, right? This is Brad Strohse. But maybe you wanna type in a specific individual's name and see all of the information, uh, tied to them, right? Maybe you wanna see a vendor, a specific vendor. You wanna see all of the information, uh, related to them. You can't remember the last time you approved the contract, things of that nature, right? So it's all in one place, um, and, and it's very easy to, to see trends and make data-driven decisions, again, right? Historically. The last piece I'm gonna take you to is the backend, just very briefly. I'm gonna go ahead and pull up my personal demo database. So what I've just brought up is, um, i- is, is my demo database where I'm logged in with a username and password. So it looks very similar, as is the goal, with the public-facing view. The only difference now, as a board member, I'm gonna have a couple privileges that the public wouldn't. So for instance, the first part of this is gonna be that I, as a board member, have the ability to take private annotations on, uh, on any agenda items. So I can go ahead, um, and, and, and then take private notes. That only I can see. It's not gonna be shared with other board members, right? Um, it is, uh, on I, as the authenticated user, I'm gonna be the only one that can, that can see the notes. So all I would do is create a new note and say, this is Sag Harbor five seven note about the Board Docs presentation. And I can search across all of my notes as well. And I can print them all, too, right? So that's the idea, um, o- on the backend. That's one of the privileges that, that, uh, board members will have, is again, that ability to take private annotations, search across all of them, uh, and print them all as well. And you can see, uh, you can see, uh, whi- which, uh, which meeting you took this note during, what the date was, and what specific agenda item that, uh, you, you took the note on as well. And again, this is totally confidential for the individual board member that took the note.
And nothing's never saved on any?
Finally, last piece is one more level of search with Board Docs. This level of search is available only for board members, only for administrators that are logged into the system. It's called meta-search. The idea of meta-search is to be able to crowdsource the Board Docs existing subscriber base. So we have three thousand, uh, clients. About one in every five school districts in America uses Board Docs for their meeting management. And we have two hundred and sixty or so school districts in New York State alone. So it's a pretty big sample size, and what meta-search allows you to do is again, gather ideas, gather best practices for better governance. So maybe we're working on a new dress code policy. Why would we invent the wheel, right? We can just type this in, and we're gonna search across all the public-facing information of the existing Board Docs subscriber base. So I'm gonna be able to see what other districts are doing, and I'm gonna be able to grab a template, um, a- a- and, and use it moving forward. So again, the idea is really to crowdsource, and this policy piece is just one, is just one side of it, right? Another big piece is the ability to search, uh, contracts, to search, uh, bids, and, and, and general procurement information. So for example, uh, if I wanna go ahead and search for a specific digital curriculum vendor, and I wanna see what kind of rates other districts have gotten, right? So maybe I'm searching for IXL math, right? A digital, a, a digital, uh, a digital curriculum product. And I'm, up is gonna come all of the districts, uh, that, that use Board Docs that have had this item on their agenda, that have had this come before the board. And it's gonna take a moment here, because it's searching, again, a, a large repository of data. But the idea is again, you're gonna have total visibility into what other districts are doing. From a contract standpoint, you'll see what rates they're getting. You can narrow this down to only New York districts as well. And you're just gonna be able to make sure that you're getting the, uh, rates consistent, uh, consistent with other districts.
And you can use Boolean searches. We see a lot of school districts there.
So I'll take a pause there while, uh, while, while my search goes here. And I'll see, James, is there anything that you'd like to add, um, or anything that you'd like to go over?
Yeah, I got this. Yes, we see a lot of school districts use this. This is a great research tool for the administrative team. So we see a lot, they might see what others are doing in terms of iPad purchases. Up in, upstate New York, you see a lot of school districts use this for snow removal bids. So they do snow removal bids in New York. And then when you see all the documents, and then that way you can bid, you can put together your bidding processes. This, that, the meta-search is only for authenticated users, so that would only be for your administrative team and for the board. The public would have the ability to search all of your stuff, but they would have the ability to search everybody else's stuff. Also note that, so you can say, well, why can't I just put in a dress code in a Google search? If you do that, you'll come up with about three point two billion hits, and it'd be everything from Macy's catalogs to everything else. And Google does cannot.
Are there, are there any questions that we can take from the group?
Okay, I guess I have to deal with the questions, so.
Yeah, who's gonna upload all this? I am, it, you know, kind of the old garbage in, garbage out, so.
Traditionally, what happens is if you decide to go for it, they would have, they would bring an implementation team on-site. And they would work with Victoria's, and it's known their two-day process. So the first day and a half, they're gonna be working with you, going over your best practices, seeing how your information, they're gonna have a lot of conversations beforehand to see how you want your information uploaded. They're gonna come in and work with you to get it all uploaded. And then on that second day, it's probably gonna be in conjunction with a board meeting, so then they can train the board that second day.
And then go back and transfer all the historic data?
There's a few different ways school districts can do that. So on one of the sites you saw, they went back maybe like two thousand and sixteen, they had a meeting, say nineteen ninety. What a lot of school districts would do is either you can back-build those minute, those meetings, or what a lot of school districts do, they just create what they call a past meeting, and just attach all the minutes. And if you attach all your minutes, then they're all searchable. So then that way you have access to all your past minutes. So you just create one meeting and just attach all those PDFs to that one meeting. And so, I mean, that's a ten-minute process if you just wanna upload all your past stuff there.
I, I think I had the same, I had the same question you did. Uh, what I'm still unclear of is, but the team here is uploading all those documents, and then are they having to tag everything so that the searchability works, too?
No, they don't have to. All they have, if they upload it, then it is searchable. So they don't have to tag.
So how is it tagged? Like, how, how is it searchable, like, if you put in, you know, uh?
Long as the documents, long as the documents are P, well, yeah, PDF, you have two versions, PDF, long as it's what they call a readable PDF. And I looked at some of your documents on your site, and they are, so you shouldn't have any problems with that.
So your program automatically scans, reads the content, and tags it?
Yes, it will index. It will index all, it will index all the documents that you upload to the system and stuff like that, so.
Okay.
Not necessarily photos, I mean, unless you have it in a name, okay? But I'm sorry, go ahead.
Uh, I had a question about, um, redaction. Would we need to redact documents before we upload them? Or do we have the option to redact them once they've been loaded? So let's say it's, you know, we need to redact it for privacy, whereas the public can't see the name, but yet the board member can.
Well, there's a way with you, Rod. The simple answer is yes, you can redact, you can redact it before, you can redact it online. They have a gooey, busy wig interface, so you can use all those tools in there to do that. But there's also another way to do that. If Scott, can you ask him to go into an agenda and show the different levels? Please. So how it would work is, if you can envision, January, if you can envision, there's three different content areas. One for the public, one's for your administrative team, and one's also for the board. So anything, the public will be able to see their piece, and you'll be able to see that, too. So let's take, for example, uh,
Okay, Scott, I think I can hear you.
So if it was like a personnel issue, you might want the public to know that you have a hiring decision. An administrative team, you might have the resume, and then, and then, and then for the board, you might have the background checks. So that'd be all in one location, but depending on your authentication, you would have rights to see all the information. Your administrative team would have rights to be able to see their side, and the public would only be able to see their side. So it's all stored in one repository. Now, if you log in and you do a search, you get access to all of them.
So un- unlike now, where it has to be put on the website, so the public can see it, and separately it's put in Google Docs for us to access it.
Yeah, all that goes.
Now it's in one place, and there's just a, uh, you know, a different number of doors you can open when you're there.
Correct. So all that versioning is, and that's those different versions. Also, Google's not the most, in terms of secure place, neither, to be putting things out there.
Really?
Just saying.
The question that I had is, right now, I mean, the search function on our website isn't great, like, and it's, so it's hard to get docs. But if you're there and you're looking at one section of the site versus another, there's that search box there. Here, how does the end user know if they're gonna search the website, or if they're gonna go into Board Docs to search and look for something?
What most school districts do is they put all, everything is that one repository for all your school district information. So they put it all there, so you just do one general search. So all your board agenda stuff, all your policies, all your library, if you wanna say, your documents, your budget documents and stuff like that. You have it in that one repository. That's how most school districts utilize it.
So would you have, like, right now, if we had a tab, and I use, I see our athletic director, I'll use that then. So let's say, right now, you go into the athletic tab, and there are different buckets. The information that's attached that you could link from there to go to the search, you wouldn't just transfer over to this and then start your search?
Well, I see it done two ways. I see certain districts. Most districts, if they want a more robust, robust search, they take those key documents and they put it inside the Board Docs. So then it's searchable all within Board Docs. Board Docs can search totally with inside there, if you wanna say, repository. You can't search your website. But right now, looking at your website, you have different searches. You have one search for your general website. You even have a search for your policy stuff.
Right, which is separate.
Yeah, that's separate. That, although, the policy and the meetings come together now. So if you wanted to do a search right now, I think you'd have to do multiple searches. So this would eliminate that. At least for all your board stuff, your board and your policies would be together.
But, but I guess what I'm asking, too, is you could have that search function embedded in different pages on the site so that it was contextually relevant to that section, correct?
No, well, not the Board Doc search. The Board Doc search is only for their repository, so it won't be able to search the rest of your website.
No, no, but what I'm saying is, if the document's gonna be here,
Right.
but someone might be looking in the athletics section for the form you have to fill out for whatever, there could be a link to that from the athletics section, but it still could search Board Docs.
Oh, yeah, yep.
Because apparently I think to go with the, whoever might, I think to go to the Board Docs.
Yep, yeah, so you're gonna have that document, just link it right back to the Board Docs.
Right, you can have it embedded contextually.
Yes, anywhere.
Okay, thank you.
So, so Board Docs is not meant to replace the school website, right?
No.
But it would be good.
No, no, I know, I know.
The school website is almost the skin, right? It's the skin on top, and then the robustness of the, of the materials underneath.
I saw your website. I mean, you have a very nice website. So I wouldn't use it to necessarily replace it, it's to complement. I've seen some smaller school districts utilize the Board Docs as their website. But looking at what y'all currently have, I'd probably keep it as it, as it is. You can just provide a link and put your more, bigger documents, and all your board policies, all your board meetings, minutes stuff inside of the Board Docs ecosystem.
Can you talk about a little bit, like, on the backend, as far as putting the agenda together? I know that part of what our district clerk does is getting all the supporting documentation that is really just for the board members. But she, with the numbering system, has to wait till the whole agenda's kind of done, otherwise all the numbers would change. So is, how does that, how does the process of pulling an agenda together work on this?
Well, I think y'all had, you know, I think y'all had a demo earlier, right?
Yes.
So y'all saw this, but what happens is to build the agenda is a lot simpler. You don't even have to wait for the numbering, because you can drag and drop. So if you look at the numbering system on the side, you can drag and drop. So if you wanna change four to three, you move it up, you drop it, and it re-numbers everything. That's one. Also, you have the ability to do workflow. So I, I'm assuming right now, everything comes into your return, and you put it all together. You can say, well, we can create an agenda item for the athletic director, for Scott, and they can put their information in there. You can have approval trees. So whoever you want to have approval, they can approve it, then it can go back. Or you cannot approve it, and then it kicks back to the user, saying you want more information. And all that stuff will be timestamped in terms of what, when, what was submitted, who was approved, and everything else like that.
So that the, uh, the supporting documentation is kind of crowdsourced instead of funneled where she's gonna kind of.
And I see it in two different, I mean, I see it in both ways. Some more bigger districts, like in Rochester, they're very into the workflow where they have all the supporting doc. They have one, they don't have the one person. They have it all decentralized, and everybody uploads to the person, the district clerk, and the superintendent, and the board president, kind of go through and review, and not, not approve and not approve different items. So, and then we see some smaller school districts, they have everything still doing the traditional, coming into the district clerk. But given the, the IT infrastructure of this, it's a lot easier to put the stuff up there, so.
And then it's already all available to the public when they're done anyway, right?
Yes, and then you can, you can turn it on when you want it to go to the public.
Yeah, um, couple questions. So I, I just wanna kind of understand, so does, does Board Docs then become embedded in the website? I'm talking just for the end user. So the public goes in, and there's, there are websites, and then Board Docs is like a section?
What will happen is, traditionally, I see now, like, you have your board, you have a section, I think, district, and you have
Right.
board, board members. So you have a link saying to, whether you wanna call it Board Docs or Board Minutes or Board Agendas. And they click on that. That would take them to this Board Docs interface right here.
Okay, and then, I'm sorry, a quick question. Then from what you were saying before about the agenda and the items just being able to be numbered, does that mean, if I'm understanding you correctly, we could end up seeing that backup documentation sooner? Which would be great, um, because then it doesn't matter about the, right?
We don't have to wait till the agenda's finalized to get it out.
Um, and then my last question was, at the beginning of your colleague's presentation, he had a, um, slide that had like, like a home page section that had like the, the agenda, the meeting minutes, and the video. And I think there was one other thing, print, right? Those are the four things. So can that page also have all the, can you all set it up so that same page of that meeting can have all the supporting documentation? Because you know how we get asked all the time about, is this up yet? Is that up yet?
Yeah, that's.
So it could automatically, once it's ready to be public, it can be set public, and then it's automatically all there too?
Yep, once you release it public, and if you want certain documents to be highlighted on, if you want to say your launch page, you can right mouse-click and say feature, and then it comes on to the master page.
Yeah, can I be more specific? What we're looking for is to go out to the public and say, "Agenda Monday, May 7th, 2018, number one through 50 items." And that the attachments to that one to 50 is sitting on that one page that opened. If you want to open one up for us, that, that says, "Agenda Supporting Docs Print."
Now, do you put all your supporting documents underneath one agenda item, or?
They're attached to the agenda for the night. So on a business agenda, you could have 50 things you're voting on, and the supporting docs are there.
You have to go into Google Docs and.
Why not?
And they're not linked together.
They're not linked.
But I'm suggesting that a doc, right.
Yeah.
They are here, they're not, how we do it.
Yes.
Right. But he's saying this could do that, so that'd be huge.
Yeah, so you can have one agenda item and load all those documents underneath one agenda item, if that's what you want.
But this would be specifically for board and dis, for board-related docs, correct? Because like I was thinking that we, we struggle to have a search function on the site that can deliver other docs that are board-related. We wouldn't, that wouldn't get addressed with this?
If you use the library, if you, if you said, say if you wanted to put other documents there, then you can use, that's what, that's what districts use the library for. So they put other documents, whether it's budget documents, athletic documents, so, yes.
Permission slips, stuff like that.
Yes, you can put all your forms out there if you wanted to.
So like the presentations we do, like for the education, we had three presentations today, so.
All of them will be uploaded, yeah, you can upload all those into BoardDocs, and then they're searchable. So you have a few different ways. We always suggest somebody upload as a PDF. Just make it searchable in that way, because everybody doesn't have access to PowerPoint, even though you can download a reader. But yeah, you can turn it into a PDF and upload it, and then they would be able to even search that PowerPoint presentation. So if somebody did something like STEM in your search tool, those presentations would come out.
That's a huge difference in what we have now, because if I wanted to look up, you know, how did the meeting go when we talked about the grass fields last year? I have to remember the date.
You know, I do, I Google it on the Sag Harbor Express, see what the article was. Then I go, and that is what I did tonight for the special.
I go on Facebook, I find it fast.
That's what I did, and then I went back to that meeting and told them that it was attached.
Any other questions for our representative?
Excuse me, you can't hear us, you're not my colleague, so. He works for BoardDocs, I worked for NISB, so I work for you, so.
Oh, okay.
I don't know who he works for.
What does it cost, the district?
The district, it's, uh, costs $9,000 a year. And the first year is a thousand because it's implementation, that's a one-time fee. I don't know if y'all have A through your BoSes. If you do, then you can purchase it through Eastern Suffolk BoSes, and then you get whatever A discount on it.
And I'm not saying this because he brought us donuts. Because, you know, I'm always very skeptical about administrative spending. But the, the search piece for the vending and the contracts has the potential to pay for this thing plus some, I would think, every year.
I say this, I've seen, we have 260 school districts utilize the New York State. Once somebody gets it, I haven't seen no one get rid of it after they implement it to their school districts. And I mean, and I can show you the list of all the school districts in Suffolk and that, so who utilize it. I can show you the whole state. Feel free to call them and stuff like that.
You have me a donut.
I thought she was going to say, because you didn't bring fruit.
Well, next to my bring both.
Any other questions for our representative?
No, your patience was tremendous.
Oh, no problem. I enjoyed the presentation, so thank you very much.
Thank you for coming all this way.
No problem.
Thank you so much.
It's a beautiful drive, and now I can see why people love it out here.
Just if you drop it back tonight, be careful of the deer.
I saw a lot of caucus along.
I appreciate it.
I do not plan on going all the way back to that, so.
Okay. So I have a question, it's not for him, but it's related to this. So what is the next step? Do we discuss now whether we want to do it, or are we saving that for another meeting? I just, just.
Um, I, I know that it's late, but I, if, I'd just like to get some thoughts from the board just because if, if we are going to do this, I think that it makes sense to start the new year with it. And the, the reorg meeting is a gigantic one. And if it was, if we could be using it for that meeting, I think that that would be a good launching point.
We'd actually like to use it before the reorg so that we can work out all the kinks on the meeting prior to that, so that we're ready for the reorg meeting. Because as you see, it's a whole new way of doing things. And the sooner we could start working out the kinks, the better, because that is a big meeting. And it'd be great to have it fully functional for that.
I'd like to make a motion that we move forward with this.
Second.
All right, the motion.
I'm sorry, is there any discussion there?
Discussion on the floor.
Can I just have a question before? I, I agree. But I, and I, if I was hearing you correctly, I would just like to hear from the administrators, Scott, Victoria, Katie, whoever else, about, do they think this is a good idea?
That's a discussion.
Okay, so I was going to, but I want to hear from them.
I've heard only positive comments from those school districts that have used BoardDocs, largely for the search functions, for the ease of use, you know, what we have now. I mean, we, we put so much work into these presentations alone, and they're like lost leaders. They're, you know, they're gone to us, you know, they really are. And I still haven't figured out Google Documents, learned how to find stuff, honestly.
You're not getting out of learning Google Docs.
I think I'm your best student as far as.
You've done great.
That I've learned how to use slides, and I've learned all the stuff I've learned, but.
Where is this in the budget? Can I just ask that question?
We, we probably, we take it as Scott's software budget.
That's probably where it will come from, honestly. We don't, we don't generate enough BoSes A to necessarily use BoSes for all our projects. They charge us an overhead fee and different things, so more than likely it will come out of a, of a code. We'll try to realize some savings through some other things that maybe we don't necessarily have to do next year that we were planning on doing.
But in the long term, doesn't it generate savings as well?
In manpower and time, it's going to generate a ton of money, you know? I mean, in terms of like Victoria's time, she's going to hopefully gain back a lot of my time as well. I spend a significant amount of time, you know, adding stuff to the website. And as you point out, you can't find it after the fact, you know? So in terms of that, you're not going to see real dollar value, but you're probably going to see an increase in productivity.
But where we might see the dollar value from what I hear is if we can search the bids and see whether the people are paying for services we're looking for, I would imagine there's a tremendous amount of value in that shared knowledge. And policies is an example too, that we may be, I mean, policies alone, think about the man hours it could save us here on that. I, if our building principals have feedback, that would be great. I'd also like to hear from Victoria, because from what I understand, you use this when you, oh, you didn't use it in your own district?
No, I have been to many, when I sat on Amegans's board, I sat on many seminars on it, and I pushed Amegansa to get it, and they finally got it. So I just think it's so, it makes everything so much more efficient, easier to access. It links everything together within seconds where.
Probably helps the hours you have on file requests too, right?
The transparency, and I think for you guys, the frustration and the time it'll save you guys when you search should be incredible.
I had the opportunity to use it and help implement it at Kings Park, it's a wonderful tool. And just from the business standpoint, it enables us to see all the contracts, just as you mentioned. Contracts, we can look at some of the, if you look at MOA agreements.
ODA.
Absolutely. I can look at what vendors are being paid for services, what, what we would pay, scale. I can, I can see what products are costing us in different, in our own region as well as others. It, it, it's a tremendous resource.
And the public would have easy and free access to so much more information than they have now. That, that piece of transparency, I think, is well worth the investment.
Any administrators want to chime in? Any other board members, discussion? All right, so the motion is to move forward with this. All those in favor?
Agreed.
Any opposed? All right, question carries. Thank you very much.
I want to thank Victoria for organizing this and bringing it out, that's.
Enjoy the rest of the meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No problem.
All right, what about you, number two? Yeah, come on up. Three minutes, direct your comments to the board president. We will listen, but we may not necessarily discuss. Please do not discuss personnel or individual students and state names for the camera.
Sure. My name is Patricia Moyer. I did address the board just a few weeks ago. I just wanted to kind of come back to this. I, I'm thankful that you brought this to the attention of the board, as far as the board brought this up regarding talking about special education. I'm also very happy that we mentioned the Andrew case in 2017. That basically said that schools need to do more than just the minimum to ensure a child progresses. With that being said, I also wanted to clarify that I'm not here to discuss my daughter's IAP. I realize that what happens between my daughter and her, and the school district, you know, I work that out with Mrs. Beckermanus. However, I am here to discuss training and the things that I'm asking from the board. I had mentioned in my last time I spoke to the board about ABA. It is an empirically researched technique to promote meaningful and positive behavior change. One of the misconceptions about ABA is that it's just for kids with autism. It is not. It is for all kids. Teachers in a general education classroom can use it. So when talking about training for teachers, it's not something that if we don't have a kid who has autism, it's not something that's going to go to waste. Some of the other things that I would like to ask the board for help with would be hiring procedures. Obviously, we have a very big, very big shoes to fill. So that would be something that I would ask the board for help. Staff training, I think this is essential. With regards to ABA, there are different tiers within the realm of ABA as far as proficiency. The first being what's called a registered behavior technician, which requires about 40 hours of education, taking courses, having some supervision. That is the minimum tier for ABA. From there, we go to a BCBA and then an LBA. They're, they're basically more coursework and also 1,500 hours of supervised experience. So it's, it's quite a, it's a big task to undergo. I also would like to recommend safety procedures. I know autism spectrum disorder is a spectrum disorder, meaning that it has, it presents itself in many different ways. However, there are some things that are reoccurring in that spectrum disorder. One of them is elopement, which, which basically is a term of the child leaving an area. So I, I ask you to look into safety procedures, gates that work around the school districts, to ensure that children cannot get out of the building without being monitored. Another thing is also called crisis intervention training. This is something that local area school districts, including my own and a neighboring school district, they provide. Basically, it's ways to de-escalate students who might have behavioral issues in a safe and dignified way. And that's something I think we should look into as a school district and how to deal with these behavior issues that perhaps maybe someone is not used to seeing. You know, I, I want to just come back to the whole idea of IB. The IB, how you promote IB. I'm sorry, I'm just finishing up. Basically, you do it to promote excellence, okay? The teachers travel all over the country to get training. I'm asking that you have that same training for our needed students. Something is wrong with you, you don't see a general practitioner, you go to a specialist. That's what I'm asking for the children with special needs in the school. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? No, come on, no, 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 come on. Thank you for staying.
It was really interesting.
Come back, please.
First of all, Katie, thank you very much for just, you know, it's great that somebody, for you. This is a jargon-ridden, jargon-sodden world, acronyms flying left and right. And for somebody to just finally lay it out for you, just like, here's what all this stuff means, and you know, goes a really long way. And hopefully is, is a really good start to encouraging, you know, a broad and straightforward discussion of what is a very tricky subject. So that's great. We've come a long way, as you said. We've also got a long way to go, is equally obvious. One other small point that I, I got the sense, particularly January and Chris, that you, you mentioned it. You know, the I and the IEP, it being so individualized. You, you can sometimes get so obsessed with the idea that everyone's so incredibly individual that you almost end up going, well, like, how do you make a plan, right? Because it's just, it's so random. But make no mistake, you know, a, a correctly sized, an intelligently sized and well-qualified pool of resource, you know, just a modest number of, of well-qualified people. They mainly sort of change their spots as, as the people that they're dealing with, you know, flow through. But, but that resource pool can be surprisingly static, it's not the right word for it, but can be, can be a really stable thing. I want you to get a sense that we've got to kind of paint the whole thing a completely different color every year. Because I just don't think it's. I think that if you have well-qualified people, particularly, you know, well-staffed, well-trained, well-qualified people, that they're more than capable of handling that. And the degree of change, maybe at the individual kid-by-kid level may be significant. But the truth is that there are awful lot of, you know, they have more in common than they have differences, actually. So don't get too hung up on that. I just wanted to make that point as well. And finally, completely differently, the STEM thing was brilliant. Loved that. Was it Mr. Maloney? Okay, I'm not, brilliant names, who was terrific. He pointed out that quote from the Villa Melinda Gates Foundation about people finding their groove and sticking with it, and that's what's successful in the, you know, modern environment. If you haven't seen it, it was a TED Talk by a guy called, so Ken Robinson. He's English, I'm sorry. But, so it's the most downloaded, it's the most watched TED Talk in history. So staggering numbers of people have watched this thing. Slightly contentious title, "Do Schools Kill Creativity?", question mark. But the theme of it, that, the way, it's also highly entertaining, it's not at all boring to watch, it's really interesting. But, but he talks about this exact thing, that people, especially nowadays, finding their groove, you know, somehow within the system and going with that groove is extremely important. So I highly recommend that. I'm on a board of a school with him, and I think he's kind of amazing at what he does. So I just wanted to throw that out as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? The public can put two? All right, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So can I mention something?
Yeah.
Because, um, just on camera with it, because there are other people here. Don't forget about the budget vote and school board vote on Tuesday, May 15. And it's also Teacher Appreciation Week. And we have a wonderful staff throughout our buildings, but this happens to be Teacher Appreciation Week. And we have, we have fabulous teachers, and I wanted to say thank you. And we appreciate all you do every day for our children.
Anything else with me? Can I get a second for the motion?
Second.
All those in favor? Any opposed? All right, thank you.